I'm calling the meeting to order. The meeting protocol is the chair, that's me, shall maintain order at the meetings in accordance with Robert's Rules of Order, and the Commission has the responsibility to be a model of respectful behavior in order to encourage community participation and citizen input at Commission hearings, meetings. The Commission and the audience are expected to refrain from using profane language and/or ridiculing the character or motive of Commission members, staff, or members of the public, and to maintain the standards of tolerance and civility. When we get to public comments on non-agenda items, anyone wishing to address the Commission on matters not on the agenda but within the jurisdiction of the Commission must do so by email in the manner described above, I just described. Please state the matter on which you wish to speak. Matters not appearing on the Commission's agenda will not receive action at this meeting, but may be referred to staff for a future meeting. We do listen to you. Presentations will be limited to three minutes, or as otherwise established by the Commission Chair, three minutes. Persons are not required to give their name or address, but it's helpful for speakers to state their name for the record and whether or not they're Fairfax resident, in order for the Secretary to identify them. Conduct: All interested persons are invited to participate in these public hearings. In order to give all interested persons an opportunity to be heard and to ensure the presentation of all points of view, members of the audience should: 1. Limit their presentation to three minutes. 2. Provide their comments by email as described above. And 3. State your view and concerns succinctly. And 4. Submit any new documents to the planning staff first via email to be entered into the record. So, are there any public comments on non-agenda items? How do we... Someone's opening a can? I don't know what that was. Okay, thank you very much. I think we will now close the public comments on non-agenda items hearing. None? And there are no consent items on the calendar, on the agenda today. So our first public hearing item is 1573 Sir Francis Drake Boulevard, and application number 20-5.
Okay. This application is for a conditional use permit for outdoor seating that will remain in effect while the structure is in use as a restaurant, but if approved, would not go into effect until the temporary pandemic conditional use permit restrictions are no longer in effect, or until October 3rd, 2020, whichever occurs first. So they currently have a temporary use permit to serve food outside. This project encompasses the creation of roughly a 406-square-foot decomposed granite patio area at the rear of the building, adjacent to the unpaved parking lot, to accommodate two picnic tables and three smaller patio tables, placement of one to two picnic tables at the rear of the site west of the adjacent neighboring barn at 1963 Sir Francis Drake Boulevard, the relocation of the three tables previously approved by San Anselmo within the Sir Francis Drake Boulevard right-of-way at the front of the site into the Fairfax Town Limits at the front of the building under the roof overhang, and placement of seating for persons waiting to eat or have a drink amongst the Redwood Grove on the west side of the building, but no tables are proposed there. The proposed tables would provide seating for approximately 28 persons. Hours of outdoor service would be from 9:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. during the summer months, and 9:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. during the winter. No new lighting is proposed. The highway commercial zone where the property is located lists restaurant uses as permitted, but it indicates that if any of a business wants to operate outside the building, it requires a use permit. And the proposed... Okay, so the proposed outdoor seating requires the use permit. The purpose of the use permit process is to allow the proper integration into Fairfax of uses which may be suitable only in certain locations in the town or in a zone, or only if the uses are designed or laid out on the site in a particular manner. The outdoor seating will not be visible from Sir Francis Drake Boulevard or the residences on Hill Avenue to the south due to intervening tall hedges, a fence, and trees. The outdoor seating will only be visible from the Caterpillar Academy daycare to the east. The addition of the permanent outdoor restaurant seating will not cause a significant increase in traffic to the site, and it's not subject to the traffic impact permit process because it does not involve the construction of any new structures or in addition to the structure. And that's what kicks a project into the traffic impact permit process. It's if you're adding square footage to a building that generates 100 average daily traffic trips or more beyond the use that was in the building previously. The applicants are going to provide two bike racks that can accommodate the storage of six to eight bicycles, and those racks would alternate with seven above-ground planters to create a barrier between the outdoor seating and the vehicle parking and driveway areas, and to provide parking for the many bicyclists that are customers of this business. The noise created by the limited number of 28 diners is not likely to exceed the permitted noise decibel levels for the adjacent residential dwelling noise zone. Additionally, the outdoor seating noise is not expected to reach the maximum noise level limitation set forth in the noise ordinance, and ambient noise levels from Sir Francis Drake Boulevard and from the car wash, they're both very loud, and realistically, they're higher than the noise limits that are allowed in that area right now. The project involves the placement of only temporary planters, bike racks, tables, chairs, and red umbrellas, minor grading to level the patio area, and placement of a crushed granite surface. And none of these things constitute the new construction of a structure. Therefore, the project is not subject to the Design Review Chapter of the Town Code. Our parking ordinance is also based on the square footage of the structure, and they provide the five required spaces based on the square footage of the building. So we are recommending that the Planning Commission approve the request for a use permit, conditional use permit for outdoor seating, and we have included in our resolution recommending approval a number of conditions. They include, but are not limited to: Live music is not allowed, and no music shall be played outside this building, nor shall any music be piped from the inside of the building to the exterior seating area unless such a modification of the conditional use permit is applied for and approved by the Planning Commission. If additional lighting for the outdoor area or any other changes to the approved plan are deemed necessary going forward, they shall either be approved by the Planning Director, or if he deems it necessary, shall be approved by the Planning Commission as a modification of the conditional use permit. Existing lighting fixtures currently lighting the outdoor areas of the site shall not result in light spilling beyond the access pathways or beyond the enclosed seating areas. The lighting conditions are not meant to restrict low-level individual table lights that do not cast light beyond the table surfaces. Plant material used in the planters shall be native drought-tolerant species. The hanging signs that increase the number of signs for the business beyond the permitted two along the front of the building shall be submitted for review and approval by the Planning Commission. This conditional use permit shall not be in effect till October 3rd, 2020, or whenever the Governor's roadmap to resilience reaches the stage that eliminates the social distancing regulations requiring six feet of social distancing separation between diners that are not living together, whichever comes first. The applicant shall comply with all requirements of the Department of Alcohol and Beverage Control, and shall obtain any necessary permits from Marin County Environmental Health Department prior to switching from the temporary COVID-19 use permit to the conditional use permit. And that would conclude our report.
Thank you, Linda. And Ben, have anything to add to that?
I do not.
Okay, thank you. Any questions of staff? Yes, Mimi.
Hey, Linda, thank you. Do you guys have a recommendation on the timing of the signage going through the approval?
You know, we didn't put a timing on it just because everything is so stressful for the businesses right now. We spoke with the owner who acknowledged that, you know, acknowledged they weren't aware that those extra signs hanging there were not permitted, and so they have indicated they are going to apply. If the Commission wants to put some kind of a time limit on when the application has to be submitted, staff is fine with that. If you want to give them 30 days or something to get their application together, they do have to get drawings together.
Okay.
Well, if I could, I have one more question. The addendum with the revision to the seating that's proposed for the Redwood Grove area, does that envision, to your knowledge, the same seating that we saw with the previous proposal that I assumed was for that area? Which, oh, let's see if you can... Silly screen. It's the table and chairs that's on the front next to the roped-off portion. I see a two-top. So are those the chairs that are planned for the Grove under the addendum?
No, I think, so I don't think they're going to be the rickety chair... I shouldn't say rickety. The slender chairs that you see by the tables, they're going to be more substantial. They have kind of like beach chairs that you would sit in, the wood ones, they're out there now. But you'd have to double-check that with the applicant. They originally thought about putting tables in the Redwood Grove, and then they changed their mind. So there are no tables proposed in the Redwood Grove. It's just going to be kind of comfortable chairs that people can relax in.
Is that, that's supposed to be a waiting area, isn't it?
Correct, right.
So Norma and Cindy. And Laura.
Oh, Norma, you have to turn...
You're muted.
Unmute. Okay, got it, thank you. I love the outdoor seating idea. However, I do have concerns regarding this project. One of them is that I'm not clear. It certainly is not clear from the documents we have where the three chairs that San Anselmo approved that, from the photograph that comes with the staff report, are not on the city sidewalk and right-of-way, but inside that partial concrete mural or under the overhang of the building. I am not supportive of putting them in the sidewalk because that would make those non-ADA compliant sidewalks. And so I have some issues there. My other concern is that I see three different photos and layouts and sketches of what's going in, and I don't fully understand what the heck is being proposed to go in. I understand we don't have much discretion in terms of aesthetics or design, but I should at least be able to figure out what will be where. I'm concerned about these canisters that I see in the photographs that came with the staff report. If those are meant to block traffic, I'm seriously concerned about that. And then on a separate, on a separate site plan that was separate from the staff report, there's a completely different layout on the large architectural plan than what we see on the 8x10, the small page attached to that plan. And then there's yet another site plan that was sent to us via email from, it says, "previous site plan submitted for the original something."
I think I can walk you through the difference between these drawings.
That would be helpful.
Thank you.
So, so the large set of drawing that you have with the smaller, smaller plan that's on a graph paper?
Yes.
Okay, so the large set of plans was what the applicant originally thought they wanted to do for the permanent use permit, right? They were granted a...
Okay, excuse me. You're saying not temporary, but for permanent use?
Correct.
Not until the fall sometime?
Right.
Okay, okay, gotcha.
But after they started operating under their temporary use permit, right? They discovered some things that might work better, and unfortunately, they had already submitted for their permanent use permit. So that's why you have the ABC floor, the ABC layout on the graph paper is stapled to your large set. Because what they wanted to add from their ABC permit for the temporary use permit was the two picnic tables back by the barn. Do you see those? They should be circled in red.
Right.
Two picnic tables, but you're talking about the 8x10 that's attached to the large plan sheet?
That's their, that's their temporary plan for the ABC license that they submitted. And they wanted to, after operating for a little while under their temporary use permit, they wanted to add the two tables by the barn. So that should be circled in red on the graph paper, small sheet that's stapled to your large set.
Something by the hedges?
Yes.
By the barn, between the barn and the hedges?
Right, do you see?
I see two tables, apparently, circled in red, with temporary stanchions. Are the stanchions those metal cans? What are the stanchions?
Yes, those are the stanchions, yeah.
They look like kegs or cola...
They're kegs, they're like metal kegs or cans?
So then on that same...
What are those, what are those for?
Those are supposed to keep the traffic... Yeah.
Yeah, if I might interrupt those...
To keep from hitting someone sitting in the tables? Okay, I'll let you go on with your description.
Okay, so then on that same graph paper, eight-and-a-half by 11, up by Sir Francis Drake in the Redwood Grove, you'll see another red circle because that was another area that they wanted to change from their large set that they submitted with their application. And that was, they no longer want to have tables in the redwoods. They just want to have some chairs for people to wait for tables. So they're just going to be sitting there. There's going to be, going to be no tables any longer. And then the other set, the other plan that I sent you was the... People were asking questions about what the original site plan looked like before the lodge even opened, and where they might put a fence between the lodge property and the daycare. So I sent you that, not to confuse things, but to show you the orientation of the lodge property to the Caterpillar Academy next door, so you could maybe figure out where a fence might go between the two properties, because right now, there's nothing separating the two properties.
You're talking about the daycare facility?
Uh-huh. So the plan I emailed to you today was the plan that was originally submitted before the lodge opened. I also had previously sent you the Caterpillar Academy plan because a number of you were questioning whether there shouldn't be some kind of a fence between the two properties. So those were just for reference. They weren't, they weren't supposed to be a part of the outdoor seating use permit application. They were for reference.
I see. Well, that helps a little in terms of questions. That's fine for now. Thank you, Linda.
Okay.
Okay, I think we had Cindy and Laura.
Okay. Question for Ben. Can you explain, because the lodge is operating under a temporary use permit right now, and this is the first one we've seen, can you explain what that process was? Does an applicant complete an application that addresses the design, the hours, the seating, lighting? Do they get a staff visit on that, like a regular application? And the last part of that would be, because I noticed the hours were different under the TUP versus what's being submitted for the CUP. And then, does an applicant need the ABC approval before the TUP? Or they get the TUP while they're going through the ABC process? Thanks.
Okay. In terms of the TUP process, obviously, we were creating a process that Council had authorized that two days prior. And the interest, the period of interest there was to try to be quick and be thorough enough with the TUP that, in all likelihood, there wouldn't be problems. In terms of an application, we did develop an application form. The applicants filled that out. It doesn't have the degree of detail. Obviously, we were using the ABC diagram, and the driving force there was simply recognizing that these businesses are hemorrhaging money. Many of them aren't going to survive, and that we need to be as fast and supportive as possible while still addressing what seemed to be the critical public needs with that type of use. Keep in mind that this is a temporary use, 120 days or until October 3rd, then it goes away. In terms of aspects like lighting, et cetera, staff included those in the conditions of approval. So, you know, the applicants basically told us where they wanted to have seating, and staff took it from there. With respect to the hours of operation, that was a conversation based on a site visit. Yes, that, staff did visit the site and talk to the applicants. And the idea, I think, was that on the Friday-Saturday period that those are typical later business hours. And Linda can probably chime in. I think in the process of applying for the permanent use permit, they said that they would probably be willing to go with shorter business hours in order to be good neighbors, and that's what they're proposing going forward. But the idea is, the need was to be, it was better to be fast than perfect. And if there were some items that were perhaps missed, hopefully, they were addressed in the application for the permanent use permit. And, you know, we definitely want to hear the Commission's comments about both of those applications.
And they're not, sorry, just...
I'm sorry, go ahead.
And asked me to address it. They're not staying open outside past 8:00 p.m. So they're not, they're not serving after 8:00 p.m. out in the outdoors. If their use permit gets approved, they've asked for hours to 8:00 p.m. during the summer, and I think five during the winter.
Right. So the last question, Ben, then, and I think I know the answer for the TUP, is a business would be doing kind of things in tandem. So as far as the ABC approval, they wouldn't have had that. They would have been submitting for that at the same time they submitted for the TUP, correct?
What staff was doing there, much like what we did with respect to the county's, the county health department directives, is to require them to comply with whatever applicable ABC standards there were. So the assumption was that the applicants are in the business of selling alcohol, and they know that they need to comply with ABC requirements, and that the condition of approval required them to comply with those requirements.
And then...
And staff is actually not...
Go ahead.
Yeah, excuse me. I do not know what those specific, the specific requirements are. I do know that they have the application. I would assume that they got their ABC approval. But that's something we can ask the applicants when it's their time to speak.
And then one other quick question. On the diagram, on the larger plan, it shows one way in, one way out. I think entering the back of the lodge on the west side, and then having a circle and coming out on the east side. And maybe this is a kind of a discussion point for later. I know, I think, the original plans may have had it the other way, but I guess from a town's perspective with traffic and drive-throughs, my question for staff would be, would it make sense to have that as a circle and then not having entrances in on both sides of the building?
I actually agree with...
I will...
Oh, I agree there because if you look at their site plan that they submitted and the one that was submitted prior to their original opening, and it may just be something that they forgot or got lost in the shuffle, they show the entrance between the Caterpillar Academy and the east side of the lodge and the exit, right? Looking at that right? And the exit on the west side, and I think that's the safest way, probably. Because when you're trying to pull out between the two buildings, if you were trying to pull out the other way, there might be less visibility. I think it makes more sense to have it in a loop, yeah.
Thank you.
Than to have cars entering and exiting both ways and trying to maneuver around each other and going all different directions.
Okay. Those are my questions for now, thanks.
Mr. Kirkland.
Okay. My question, I'm still kind of confused about the front yard tables.
Yeah.
So are they, I mean, the, so are they, are they going to stay in the front? Or are they just moving on the other side of that concrete wall?
Yeah, let me explain that a little bit better. So they went to San Anselmo for an encroachment permit to put tables on the Sir Francis Drake side of the, of the rock wall there, because that's San Anselmo. And they could get an outdoor eating per, they could get an encroachment permit a lot e, more easily from San Anselmo to put tables out. San Anselmo did approve it, and we were, we, actually, our building official went out to measure ADA clearances, and it did meet ADA. He, or maybe he didn't go because it's San Anselmo, right? So we referred the complaint to San Anselmo. But San Anselmo did approve three tables out front. It's been getting hot, and so now that they've applied for their permanent use permit, they have shifted those tables into Fairfax under the roof overhang of the building. So you now see them where they want them to be, but they were originally approved by San Anselmo on the other side of the Sir Francis Drake side of that wall. Does that make it a little clearer?
Yeah, I just wanted to clarify. And then what about the little rope barricade? Is that, what's, what's, what's proposed for that?
Ask the applicants. I'm assuming that will go away, but maybe they're planning on trying to continue to have three tables in San Anselmo. I don't know. You'll have to ask them.
That was all my questions.
Okay.
I have a couple of questions about the reso on page two. You know, I don't, I don't think it's clear what summer hours and winter hours means, because there's, there's fall and spring, you know? And so I think, rather than saying summer and, and winter, might be good to have dates, you know, at least a month range for each of those.
Okay, then I, since I use that language because that was the language the applicant used, you might ask them if they could clarify what they meant by that?
Okay, I'll, we'll do that. And then I had another question about the aspect of, you know, someone, Cindy brought this up. These, these kegs that are used, was that, is that kind of, does staff, is okay with that?
Well, the kegs are for, so I believe the kegs were for the temporary use permit. They're proposing planters and, and bike racks for the permanent.
Okay, all right.
So kegs are the temporary use permit, but, but clarify that with them. Their site plan that they gave for their permanent use permit is using planters and bike racks to separate the area. It, you know, this was kind of a moving project, so I don't know. Maybe they are trying to still use the kegs for the two tables out by the barn because that was added kind of after the fact. So you should ask them, are they going to use planters back there to separate those tables from the driveway? It should, I believe it should match. It should be consistent. So the planters are around the large area. They should have the planters separating off the two tables by the barn. So what that means is that the kegs would go away after the temporary use permit is, is over. Right? Okay. Now I can't hear Phil.
All right, okay. So if, my concern is if cars, if staff, whether, the question is whether staff took this into consideration here. consideration here. If a car actually makes that U, it's, it's possible that stones could be thrown up by tires and those barriers aren't, you know, sort of permanent or they could be knocked over very easily and there's people going to be drinking. So this is, these are the elements of concern I have.
But the, but is the concern about the beer keg canisters or are you still concerned about the large metal planters that would be filled with soil?
Well, if they're, if they're sort of anchored in the, in the ground, I just don't know if staff had an issue with that. That was my question really.
I, so when I went out and saw the temporary beer kegs, I was concerned, but I'm not, I'm not that concerned by these large, you know, you know, the metal, they're actually livestock water troughs is what I believe they're going to be using. And they're quite large and they're filled with soil and then planted. And so I think when those are in, I mean, if, I don't think you can go very fast in that driveway, so I think that they're adequate, but, but not the kegs. The kegs aren't going to stop a car, I don't think.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Any other questions? Oh, yes, Michelle, thank you.
Hey Linda, I just wanted to ask you to talk a little bit more about your thinking about the daycare and this land use, kind of what's in the code or what is, what was your thinking? You mentioned earlier, you started to think about a fence, but I didn't see that in the conditions or what, what's some of your thinking around?
So I wasn't necessarily thinking about a fence, but a number of the commissioners raised questions about a fence because right now, the two properties, there's no division between them. There is a fence between the kids' play area and, and an open grassy area on the neighboring property, but there's nothing to show where the lodge property ends.
This is a daycare, not a school then, right? It's a daycare.
Correct.
So we don't have anything in our code that gives distance requirements between drinking establishments and daycares? Okay.
The daycare, the daycare required a use permit and they went through the use permit process. At the time, this building was vacant, but, um, you know, it was originally built as a saloon and they, I believe they acknowledged that they knew that something would eventually be going in there. They are actually in contact with the applicants. The applicants have contacted the daycare and they've contacted the owner and the owner verified that for me, that the lodge has been in discussions with them and they indicated they don't, the only concern they have is they want to make sure that the use doesn't use their property. So sometimes people will drive in and they won't realize that that's not parking for the lodge because there's no fence. So that, that was the own, the owner of the neighboring property's only concern. Otherwise, he's, he has no problem with the use permit request.
Linda, did you want to mention it all into the record of the letters we received today? Just so the public is aware of what?
Well, I'm, I'm thinking now that I heard from some of the planning commissioners that they didn't receive them, even though I emailed them, I think I have to read them all during public testimony time.
Thank you.
Okay.
Yes, that's a, I think that's an appropriate procedure. I, the emails went out, you know, in the, in the town of Fairfax system and I, I got those, seemed very supportive.
Some of you are getting them and some of you aren't, I don't know why, but I'll read them.
Any other questions from Commissioner for Staff? Norma, thank you.
My unmuted here. Okay, so Linda, would you clarify, in terms of parking, the neighbor's concern, I'm looking at the large architectural sheet now. The neighbor's concern is that the lodge's customers would park between the barn, between the barn and the daycare?
Let me clarify, that was my comment. What he said was originally when they put the tables out by the barn, they were a little bit pushed onto his property and his only concern was that all their improvements and the use stay on their property. I said that I've driven in and it seems like people have been parking there, but the people parking there could be the daycare, but then the daycare would have to trespass onto the lodge property to get in there. So I assumed that they were cars from the lodge, right? Because the daycare is supposed to be entering on the east side of their property, they're not supposed to be coming onto the lodge property to get to the back of their property.
But also, it's not clear that, it's not clear from the drawings that the eight and a half by 11 supplemental diagram has distorted dimensions that can't be verified on the larger sheet. There doesn't seem to be the space for those two tables unless they're taking up a standard parking space. And, and also looking at that large sheet, what is immediately, okay, between the main lodge building and the proposed permanent patio area, there's a, a thick black wall. What is that thick black wall?
That was the addition that they originally proposed before they opened up. That's, it was before you for design review many years ago, oh, not many years ago, few years ago.
So that does not exist.
No, I, ask them, I thought they did create it.
But then in the supplemental diagram page, it shows a box in an approximate location that says ADA restrooms. Is the, okay. You know what? My concern is that I don't think the tables over by the barn are appropriate or that there's not space and I'm concerned that no one can seem to point to exactly what is being proposed for when or where or when. And I'm concerned about the lack of safety with the kegs, but.
You've gone, you've gone off questions, Norma.
Yeah. I'll let it go with that and we can move on.
Save that for Commissioners' comments. Any other questions of staff? Okay, seeing none, then I guess we can invite the applicant to come forward and answer questions or make statements.
Good evening, can you hear us? Okay. Well, thanks for indulging us tonight.
If you could just identify yourself.
Yeah, this is Brian and Lori Bruckner.
Okay, thank you.
Owners of the lodge. And I guess I'll just start by answering some of the questions that were raised that weren't answered through the staff report. The keg barriers that we have right now are absolutely just a temporary thing. Those are going to be replaced, as Linda indicated, with a more permanent galvanized structure that will provide a substantial barrier between the guests and our parking lot. Just a quick comment, you know, right now, everything going on behind our business right now with regard to the, the current onsite dining situation was done under the temporary use permit program created by the town council a couple of weeks back. You know, our business has been suffering substantially, not since when the shelter in place started, but well before that. I don't know if you remember, but back in February, county public health officials were encouraging people not to gather and to distance and restaurants at that point started seeing big declines in their business. So we're going into month five of a very difficult time for our business and by extension for our family. And so, you know, getting that back area going as quickly as possible and, and, and doing it as responsibly as we can was the goal. And obviously, we want to play catch-up and, and get everything dialed in. But, you know, we're, we're talking about a decline of around 30% and, and just to maybe bring that home for you, be the equivalent of the town of Fairfax losing the funding for its police department or fire department. That's how substantial it is for our family. So, you know, some of these things about the kegs and this and that going on back there, it's literally, we're just trying to get going again and get some money going in and retain our staff and, and move forward. Other, other questions that were brought up, the fence and, and our relationship with the, the daycare next door, there's an easement between the two properties that allows the next door residents to use that driveway to access the parking spaces adjacent to their property. So the cars that Linda probably saw that day are actually the employees of the daycare. So they park in that area between their building and the barn. They're big supporters of our business, both the owners of the property and the daycare, and we have a great working relationship there. Another question was brought up about, you know, whether or not we have approval from the ABC for people to be having a glass of beer or a glass of wine outside. We do. The ABC has been very on top of what's going on and very proactive to try to help businesses out. They have press releases that come out regularly with guidance on what businesses can and can't do during the shelter in place orders. One of the first ones allowed businesses to sell, you know, beer and wine to go. And the most recent one allowed businesses to basically utilize all of their property for outdoor dining and extend basically the area that their current liquor license applies or applies to. So we do have the necessary approvals from ABC for this. There were some additional questions about the sidewalk out front, the tables there, the rope barrier. That rope barrier was a requirement from ABC so that we have a clear delineator as to where people are allowed to consume alcohol. So that was a requirement from them. We have signs on the post stating that alcohol is only required or only can be consumed within that roped off area. There was another question about hours. I agree that that needs to be tightened up. It was our thought that basically, you know, we would be open till the eight o'clock-ish hour, probably during daylight savings hour or daylight savings time. And when, when the clocks turn back, then we would, you know, reduce our hours along with the reduction in, in daylight. So that's, that's what I have just right off the top of my head and happy to, and any questions y'all have?
Let me ask you a question about, so my understanding is that we're stuck with daylight savings time forever now, that we're not supposed to be changing our clocks back? I just, so let me suggest this, instead of saying winter and summer, because it, it kind of implies you're closed spring and fall, which we don't want to see happen. So I would suggest if, if, if staff could work with you and come up with sort of the date range and the hours, and I think you'd be better off with that certainty in the permit. And I know it's temporary and it may not last till the winter even, but I would just recommend that if, if we could do that.
That makes sense.
Any other questions? Commissioner Newton?
Thank you. Just really appreciate you guys, you know, making the efforts to reopen and keep going. And before I, you know, say anything else, I just want to tell you that our hearts go out to you and I'm sure everybody here on this commission supports your continued, you know, success and that patient. So do you have thoughts about how soon you might be ready to undertake getting approval of the signage?
I'm happy to do that immediately.
And then can you describe the seating for me that you have in the Redwood Grove?
We basically have Anarondak chairs, basically. There are one, two, three Anarondak style chairs and one oak rocking chair, so. So it seats four people, I think, or well, no, more than that, seven people.
Okay, thank you.
Another question, your, your primary clientele you're expecting will be bike riders?
Most of the people traveling to our business are either on foot. We get a lot of families that live close by and come down with their strollers and their, their baby joggers. And then others love to ride there on bike as well. So the vast majority of people are, are coming not by car.
So you, you don't, I'm just asking you, you, do you expect many cars to actually do that U-shaped drive?
I, I don't. I think most of the people that have visitus, visited us so far realize that there is very limited parking and so they tend to make other arrangements in terms of how they come to the business. So the activity in that parking lot is, is very small. You know, it's a tiny little place, we're not talking about Good Earth or Safeway here. It's, it's a very small piece of land. And so it's just, it's not, it's not even possible to go at a certain speed in there and the, the trees, even the trees and the narrowness of the, of the two entrances really choke off, they kind of basically self-limit the, the speed you can go anyways.
Okay, well, I too want to, as, as Commissioner Newton did, want to tell you my appreciation for your efforts, expense and kind of going for it. We, we certainly want to keep as many restaurants going in Fairfax as we can because we're kind of known for it, so thank you for that.
Thank you.
Any other, yes, Commissioner Swift?
So two questions. The, in the back on the east, along the daycare fence, there's a lot of no parking signs. So that's the area we're talking about that is the daycare property and the parking there then perhaps with the no parking signs is to allow parking for daycare staff?
That is correct.
Okay, so the no parking is to tell everybody else not to park there. And the rope barrier out in front then seems to be, even if the tables that were beyond, that were on the sidewalk, go away, the rope barrier then will stay, I guess, up against where the horse hitching area is on that block, maybe in front of that to help rope off the area and identify it for no alcohol beyond, is that what I'm hearing? You'll keep the rope barriers going forward?
We would, we would keep that rope barrier out on the sidewalk because that's the area to which we're licensed with ABC out front.
Right. Okay, thank you. Oh, one last question. With the Redwood Grove and the seating that is there, are there other areas along that fence line that could handle that seating for people waiting for a table and also those that, you know, would be having a beverage out there outside of that Redwood Grove?
Yeah, yeah, there's lots of room along that western boundary there, near the, the privet trees that basically, basically provide the boundary with the car wash next door.
Okay, thanks.
Yeah.
More Commissioner questions? Commissioner Fergoso?
Thank you. I just wanted to ask the owner to clarify, you are still moving forward with the permanent seating arrangement that is in the larger plan, is that correct? At a future date when, in October or so, when that is allowed?
Well, yes.
Okay, so my question was, my biggest concern are the kegs, which I think are a bit of a safety issue. Would you be willing to install a couple of your larger planters along that turnaround perhaps? Just for, you know, a little beefier edge since you, you had planned to install those later on anyway surrounding the outdoor seating area? later on anyway surrounding the outdoor seating area?
A- absolutely. Um you know, a- as I mentioned earlier, what's out there right now is literally just like we have the opportunity to get back open uh, you know, in a responsible manner, spacing guests out. And so we wanted to do that as quickly as possible, bring some staff back, get them working, get some revenue coming in again. And so we used what we had, but obviously we'd like to to tighten things up now and, you know, implement those items that we have on the plan, the nice galvanized steel planters that provide a good barrier and and obviously aesthetically are much nicer.
Right, that that would be great. I I would feel good about that. You don't need to install all of them, but a couple of them strategically placed, I think, would really help the safety of those innermost tables closer to the main lodge. Uh and and I do like the idea of seating along that Redwood Grove. Uh that sounds like a nice spot.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Caroline?
Thanks. Um I just wanted to um I have, I'm concerned about the backup space that's provided on the on the large drawing. It's it's indicates twenty-four feet, which is which is kind of tight. Twenty-six is kind of more ideal. So I I would just make a suggestion just to maybe because right now you do have the kegs there and they're kind of temporary. So and that will let you know if you might need a little more space. Um because I don't, I don't, you know, we want to make sure that it's safe and people don't knock over um, you know, back into the tables or the bikes that are planned there. But um other than that, I I think I I'm glad um the application's coming before us and we did have concerns earlier, you know, about the tables that were along the sidewalk. So I'm glad that we have a plan to incorporate them into into um, you know, next to the building. So thank you for that.
Commissioner Newton, thank you.
Well, um I don't know if uh any of the other commissioners wanted to say something. I already had my bite at the apple. There's the Commissioner Gonzalez Harbor. I'll let you go first.
Commissioner Gonzalez Harbor.
Okay, can you hear me? Yeah, okay. All right. Well, um thank you to the applicant for hanging in there during these very uncertain times. Um I maybe missed it uh in terms of the temporary seating count versus the final seating count. I see the twenty-eight. Is that for the permanent seating count?
Yes.
Twenty-eight. Okay, so what is it during the temporary?
I don't know. I that I wasn't reviewing that permit. I was reviewing the permanent conditional use permit. You'd have to ask Ben.
Okay. So will the applicant, I believe, is still online here? Is that correct?
Ben, are you there?
I don't see the applicant on my screen.
I know, I know that Ben Ben's site plan was the ABC plan. So I think you can kind of extrapolate by counting. You know, I included the the temporary permit site plan in your planning commission staff report. So let me just take a look at that and see if I can figure out.
Yeah, I would say if we can get the applicants to respond.
Yes, I think the applicant is still on.
I mean, if every if every table and chair were occupied, um it could be wonderful, but it's never happened. Looking at about forty-five people.
Okay, so forty-five would be for both indoor and outdoor.
That's just the outdoor temporary right now, spread apart.
Okay, so the temporary outdoor spread apart is forty-five. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, so that is a temporary. Okay, so seats. And then for the permanent, you have the interior seating. And then you have exterior seating. So for the permanent, what would be the count?
For the outdoor or the indoor? We're not.
Uh combined. Just I'm trying to get a sense of how many people will be uh circulating through this parking lot conceivably at, you know, as a maximum load. So I'm just trying to get a handle on, I guess, maybe the difference between the temporary outdoor. Well, because I'm trying to get a sense for what the head count is for the temporary versus the permanent maximum interior and exterior combined.
Okay, well, the floor plan I have has twenty-two seats inside. I don't know whether that that was, you know, a number of years ago when they first applied. I don't know if that's still the case. So check with the owner.
Okay.
About thirty inside uh with the bar seating, you know.
Oh, yeah, all right.
To use till twenty-twenty-two.
Okay, so interior is thirty and then exterior permanent is how many?
Twenty-eight.
Twenty-eight, okay.
Okay. Plus out front.
Okay, so when we were looking at the parking or the traffic uh triggers that, you know, this, the increase in traffic to the site is not subject to traffic impact permit requirements. Um that would be true with the count uh that we have here, which is fifty-eight. Is that correct?
Well, it's true based on the count, and it's also true based on the fact that when you read through the traffic impact permit section, it refers to if you are reuse of an existing building or expansion of an existing building, right? Expansion of the building. That's what kicks you into the traffic impact permit, not adding seats outside. The the ordinance didn't, I guess, take that into consideration. So it's not an issue.
Okay, so it's basically the, I guess, the delta, the the change or the increase is what kind of determines whether you're, you know, it's required or not. So I just want to make sure because on the surface, it looks like, you know, we're talking about twenty-eight seats, but in reality, it's a total of potential total of fifty-eight on on a very good day. Um so I just wanted to make sure I understand that. Um the the other question for the applicant uh regarding the the parking, the standard parking spaces, I'm looking at the permanent and I also agree with Laura. The twenty-four foot drive aisle is a little bit tight. Um you know, and it looks like you have room to push toward toward the south, you know, toward the south to kind of give you a little bit more room for the drive aisle without you configuring things um for the tables. Um like, you know, I I think if I agree with Laura that we, you know, if you can try to increase that by two feet, it would it would feel better. Um my, the second part to that question or the comment is where is the existing parking right now?
In the same place that it's shown on the site plan.
Or the permanent?
Right. It's like that now. Uh that's where it's been located, you know, from before when they first opened. The only thing that's been moved, the only thing that's been moved and it had to be moved during their construction phase before they moved in was the handy, was the accessible space. They worked with our building department and that space had to be moved up close to the building. So that's the fifth space that used to be shown in the back had to be relocated closer to the building and next to the accessible ramp.
Right, okay. So just, and I think everybody is kind of talked this regarding the temporary use permit, the two tables uh I guess in the south southeast corner next to the barn. Um those are displacing the existing parking spaces um as shown on the graph paper. So we have everything moves over and you have three temporary parking spaces plus the the accessible parking, correct? Um Linda, you can correct me if I'm wrong. I'm sorry.
Aren't displacing anything. There there's room. There's a table out there now.
Okay.
There's room. The table's not taking up the parking. I'm I'm
Okay, because that's what I'm getting at is that the 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 permanent, the the permanent change of use permit shows the parking all up, you know, up against the the property line. And in the temporary permit, it shows the benches or, you know, the tables. So
If you look at the, if you look at the large set of drawings and look at the dotted property line, that's the property line. The parking's actually set away from that property line a considerable distance.
Right, right. Um it's just, yes, the, I'm I'm trying to figure out where the property line is versus the fence that is showing on the temporary diagram. On the temporary diagram, we have three parking spaces with the two tables on the south corner. So um
Yeah, I think I may have made a mistake by attaching that ABC license because your actual site plan is the large one that's professionally done, that shows you the property lines, it shows you the barn. What I was trying to get at by attaching the ABC license is that when they first submitted their use permit before they operated their temporary, they hadn't envisioned putting tables out back by the barn. But once they started operating their temporary, they decided that that was a good place for them. And so rather than stop the review process and delay their use permit, I thought I could attach the ABC to just in the red circles show you where they wanted to add tables. Able to extrapolate that onto the, you know, visually onto the large set, but I see that's not really happening.
And and that's, and I think that's fine. I, the reason I'm asking, um really, I guess, m- my point or my question is whether the children at the barn or the parents um are used to seeing this parking space as it is shown on the permanent CUP. Um you know, in other words
The way it is now.
Yeah, it's, yes, because
Now, without the use permit, that's right. Yeah.
Right, because of behavior and patterns and what people are expected. Um and the fact that there is no fence or any delineation. Um but we might have more traffic going through here as a result of the outdoor seating. I was just wondering um, you know, if
Oh, you're worried about conflicts between the Caterpillar Academy um
Yes.
employees and the
Yes.
Lodge um customers. I would have to have the applicant address that. I mean, they've been, they've been operating that way. How how long have you been in business? How long has the lodge been in business? So
Been there a a year now and there's usually maybe one on a busy day, maybe two of the employees from the daycare might have a car, but generally they ride by bike too. So it just seems like, you know, a non-issue.
Right. Um I guess it's hard to tell where the children could conceivably be.
Children, the children aren't anywhere on our property. They're they're completely set off on the daycare's property and then all of the parents, there's a separate parking lot to the east of their building where they park. So that's a a completely separate parking lot from us.
Yeah, the children do not have access to the to the Caterpillar Academy employee parking area. They are fenced in an enclosed area on the other side of the building.
Okay, yeah, I was just, um I I guess my concern was about a confluence of activity
Right.
because we already more activity to to the lodge. But um it's, so I'm asking the question, you know, what you know, how do these two spaces relate to each other um at full capacity? And it sounds like the children are not anywhere near the property line at any given time.
Yeah, and I think I think I understand everyone's concerns and I think I would remind you that when you grant a use permit, if there are conflicts and issues, right, and complaints, we can call the use permit up for review and you can revisit the conditions and modify them. So, you know, if if, you know, things go kaboom and it's really busy out there and there are conflicts between the parking, we can revisit it and try to come up with solutions if it gets that popular. If they start getting a lot of um car traffic, although they're indicating that most of their customers walk or bike, so. Right, it's not, it's not a, you know, set in stone kind of thing, the use permit. If there are problems, we can discuss it again.
Okay, that's, and that's fine. I just wanted to address that.
Yeah.
Um the increase in activity and how that could affect, you know, both properties.
Right.
Let me ask um the applicant as well. I mean, isn't it true that most of the activity with the daycare center is either morning or around four or five o'clock? And there's not much activity traffic wise from parents, for example, in between those times, right?
Yeah, that's correct. It it works out well with them as neighbors because we're kind of on opposite schedules. Um, you know, they're they're dropping off in the mornings and picking up in, you know, mid to, you know, four o'clock afternoon time and you know, that's usually when most people visit us is the late afternoon, early evening and on weekends. And so they're obviously not there on the weekend. So uh it's it's a pretty easy relationship to manage.
Okay, sounds good. Um apparently Commissioner Swift has another question for you.
All right. Um the fence between the daycare and the lodge, um is that locked? So there's um the inability for lodge customers to go and over to that property?
They they have a, I'd say it's probably a four-foot-high fence between their main house and their playground. It's it's kind of like a runway, if you will. And I've I've honestly never gone up to it and looked at it closely. I know there is a gate there. Um I'm assuming they probably have some kind of child latch on it or something, but we we've never had an instance where a patron from the lodge has actually gone over and tried to go beyond that gate. Um we have had people that have sat down on the gra- on the grassy space there. Um that prompted us to put up some new signage just this week, just letting people know where the boundary is between our property and the daycare. And so I could envision putting up even more signage there, just so that's really clear to people.
Thank you.
I would suggest in that situation is to put up do not enter or something signage. Yes, thank you.
Exactly.
Any other question? Okay, uh Commissioner Newton?
So um I I think I've gotten a little bit confused by the two different maps that we have uh with this addendum. And uh what I heard staff say was that one of your uh thoughts was to use these planters, like maybe livestock troughs, big metal livestock troughs as planters. And, excuse me. And I was envisioning that you were using them on the supplemental diagram addendum where uh currently temporary stanchions are indicated. So that would be uh towards the back by the barn uh in front of the two picnic tables uh around the outdoor seating areas uh behind the ADA uh access area and along the um sort of two different areas where it looks like you, they got these temporary uh canisters by the Redwood Grove. Is that right?
Uh that is the plan uh on for the permanent uh use permit. And, you know, we're we're gonna move forward uh as part of the temporary plan as well to better demarcate that and just make it more uh conspicuous as to where, you know, people are supposed to be. uh, conspicuous as to where, you know, people are supposed to be and separate traffic and whatnot.
Okay, and, um, in the front area, uh, where it is currently got the rope barricade, uh, is there enough space on the sidewalk running Sir Francis Drake for that to continue to be ADA compliant with that barricade out there?
Yes, there is.
Okay, that's all I had. Thanks.
Okay, any other questions for the applicant? Uh, yes, Commissioner Fergoso.
Thank you. Oh, I'm unmuted. Um, there is a letter of concern from two of the neighbors. Uh, Jim and Ayesha from, from, uh, sixteen Ramona Way. And, uh, I won't, I won't go down their list uh, this evening of concerns, but they have a number of, of valid questions and concerns. And I remember this is the same house that's kind of cornered back behind the childcare center and the lodge and they had many issues and concerns when there was other remodeling in the childcare center going in and then the lodge going in as well. And they continue to have many of their same concerns and issues. Uh, I don't have a problem moving forward with this if the owner and the staff can, uh, address the concerns in this letter to the satisfaction of the, uh, the residents on Ramona at, at sixteen, sixteen Ramona Way. So if, if staff can, uh, guarantee that, that the owners will have a discussion, I'd appreciate that.
Yeah, maybe what we need to do, um, is I was planning to read all the comments. If, if, if the people that sent in the comments don't join the meeting and try to express their concerns themselves, I was going to read their concerns into the record. But based on, um, some of the issues that seem to be going forward for you know, to me, it seems to be a conflict between the residential use and the commercial uses which are set. I cannot guarantee that staff will be able to work out things that are going to make everybody happy because you have residential uses next to commercial uses.
Okay, then reading, reading those into the record, I think will be a good idea, but
So that's what I do when we, when we open the public hearing part. I'll keep track of if they show up and read their, you know, may state their own comments. I'll take them out and I'll read the people that sent me comics. That don't show up to, to read to make their own position known.
Could I then recommend that, uh, one of the conditions we place on approval be that the owners of the lodge, uh, ensure that they have that conversation with these particular owners to come to some agreement amongst themselves?
My understanding is that they have tried to reach out to the neighbors and, um, have reached an impasse with, with one or two of them. So that's what the planning commission is for, you know?
Okay, I think, I think the best procedure right now, if there are no more direct questions, uh, to the Buck, Buckners, are there? Is, is to go into the public comment period and including Linda, I think that'd be great if you, if you read letters of people who don't make public comments.
Yes, first we'll see who speaks for themselves and then I'll read the ones that don't show up.
And then what we might do, the unusual thing perhaps of, of coming back ourselves to, to make any comments that we feel necessary uh, based on some of those public, we don't usually do that, but, uh, in this case, uh, someone has a huge list of issues and they're here or not. I think it might be good to know what they are. So if there are no more questions from the commissioners, uh, to the applicant, then let's move on to the public, uh, comment period. And please remember, members of the public, we're trying to limit you to three minutes. Thank you.
Going to unmute. Um, hey guys, can you hear me? Okay? Oh, good. All right. So this is Jim. Um, Ayesha, my wife is right beside me. Um, so I guess what I'm going to try and do, um, is read what I sent Linda and then give you guys an update and then Ayesha wants to talk. So maybe we have three minutes each. I'm not sure, but I'll just get started. Um, we have some major reservations about the outdoor area during the COVID-19 emergency and the application for permanency. I've been in contact with my friend Bruce, neighbor Bruce, and I believe there is a suggestion that the use, that this use permit application be postponed until after the COVID-19 emergency. It would be in favor of that as the, as we have not had much time to evaluate the situation thus far. Um, currently our house borders a daycare Caterpillar Academy. And now we have to contend with the noise resulting from the lodge's outdoor seating area or beer garden. So the lodge's outdoor area has been already expanded because of COVID-19 emergency. Here are some of the issues thus far. Constant noise from people socializing late afternoons and weekends. No noise or privacy mitigation in place. Touch football games in Caterpillar Academy's parking area right under our window while dads hold beer glasses staring at our house. In other words, no privacy and constant noise. Um, there has been a few instances of dads and their kids using the facilities of the daycare, that is slides and play structures with beers in hand. I have been in contact with the owners, Brian and Lori. They are very cooperative so far and we've discussed several amendments to their plans. Here are some of the issues and suggestions we have discussed. Can the outdoor area be closer to the car wash even during the COVID-19 emergency ordinance? And by the way, our house is probably thirty-five yards from the nearest beer table. And I've submitted a video and a few photographs to, um, to Linda. And I don't know if she'll have time to show, but it'll give you an indication of the direct, we have a direct line of sight from the back area of our house over to the current tables and where they are placed. Okay. Kind of sound wall be constructed with additional hedge to absorb sound? Um, we, we did the opening, closing hours, we did the music, now the tables. Uh, we would request no play area for the kids while the parents are socializing. And the daycare needs to lock its facilities during non-operational hours. And the lodge needs to have clearly defined areas so no kids play in the parking lot of the daycare. So guys, just to give you a little update, um, I went and met Lori and Brian and we had a pretty good discussion. Uh, we were very clear about all our objectives. Brian sent me an email last night and he says, Jim, can you hear us out here? And I says, yes, very clearly, Brian. And he said that, um, he was going to move the tables um, over towards the car wash, which he did today, I believe. And I have to say, there's been a massive improvement in sound. Um, so my concern is that this, this commission, um, is, um, going to move forward with some kind of plans. But we're not, we don't really know what's going to work and not going to work, work or not work. For example, there's a few tables around where the barn is and I think our window is probably twenty feet away from that, you know?
Your statement is, is up, Mr. Donahue, I'll give you a minute to finish.
See, this is
I haven't had his wife.
Yeah, yeah, I, um, I, I, um, I can see to my wife. Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, well, he's basically covered a lot of it. But I'm also really concerned about people parking on the east side of the daycare and going into the bar from that side. Cause what they do is they park with their lights or their front of the bars directly into our, um, into our kitchen or our side entrance by our kitchen. And though, even though the daycare and bar have opposite schedules, we get both basically, basically from eight AM to the morning until eight, eight o'clock at night. So there's constant noise from the morning to the night. Uh, except for the weekends, obviously. And I'm actually really, as a teacher myself, I'm very concerned about safety right now with COVID. And I know all the, the necessities that they need to do. And I really, really think they should have a lock on both sides. So people from outside cannot walk in, use their structures because they don't know when to clean them. They think when they've cleaned them, they're perfect, but people have gone in there. Maybe not from the bar, even though a few times I've seen people with glasses of something in their hand. But I don't think it's a, I think hugely that's a massive safety issue for the school and for the kids.
Okay, thank you very much. Your, your time is, is up according to our three minute. Linda, I think your camera is, is aiming at your lap. There you go. Okay.
And Chair, if I have, if I might interrupt, we can put a three minute timer up if you would prefer just to make sure that people understand how much time they have.
Yeah, like, like we had at the town council meeting last night.
That's correct.
That'd be a great idea.
So we'll, we'll do that right now.
Um, any other, uh, public comments? I'm going to say thank you to the Donna Hughes for your comments, um, and any others.
You're muted, Linda.
I'm trying to show you Mr. Donahoe's photo that he sent me on a different computer. So are you interested in those drawings?
One moment, Mr. Logan.
Okay.
Oh, sorry.
Can you get okay again? And it should, you should be able to clear that. Try again to your screen.
I was trying to show Mr. Donahoe's photographs to you guys.
Do you have it open?
It's in my email. It was open in my email. Uh-oh.
Let's see your email.
Oh, wow.
How do I get?
Is this it?
Yeah.
Go ahead and click on the link.
The miracles of modern technology.
Well, we'll see.
It looks like it's opening here.
Okay, I need to get rid of all this other garbage, right? Uh-oh.
And now you can actually even, uh, stop share.
So this is the, should I stop share?
You know what? Yes, because they don't see what you're seeing right now because it wasn't open before you started. So stop share and now let's try and reshare it. It should be open. There now they'll see it.
So click on it?
Click on that and share.
Okay, okay. So this is Mr. Donahoe's video.
All right.
Thank you. Okay.
So I wonder what angle that is or what is he looking at?
There's the corner.
In window.
Can you guys hear me?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Corner of the barn. You can see the corner of the barn on the left-hand side, the, the eve of the barn. That's the barn. So through the trees is the driveway. It's, um, not that visible because you just see the eve of the barn.
I remember when, uh, the daycare came to us and the whole discussion about the, uh, view from his window from the kitchen area at that part of his house. So I think that's probably what we're looking through. We could ask Mr. Donahue to clarify if he's, if he can come back on.
It could have been still instead of
Hey, hey guys, I'm, I'm sorry. So, um, the purpose of seeing this video was to share the noise level and it's not playing. Um, it's, it's general chatter and people having fun, right? And this is just our, simply our windows what slid open. There are a few more. So there are, in other words, that's the first table just there, like people, and people are sitting on, on the beer kegs. And people are outside. So, so I believe though, that I'm working at the moment with Brian and Lori to move those tables over towards the car wash. Um, but that was the purpose of video was just to show noise. The other stills just showed the general view from our house of the area.
Okay, thank you to the Donna Hughes and the video. And now I believe we have Mr. Logan.
Hi, how you doing? My name's Thad Logan. I'm, uh, from Sleepy Hollow and I, I support the patio, uh, at the lodge. Uh, the, the, the restaurant business is exceptionally difficult. Uh, and giving, giving the lodge the ability to have expansive outdoor seating area is a, a huge amenity for his business and, and would, would really be, uh, be, be a strong, uh, a, a strong benefit for, for, for their customers. Right, Brian and Lori are great operators. They're hands-on. They, they hire local residents and, and kids during the summer. Uh, they support, support community efforts. They hosted my kids' Drake soccer team for weekly dinners. They've got a great operation and we as a community need to support them in every way they can to, to, to help, help their business survive. So I, I hope you, you look at it from that lens and, and support the, uh, uh, Brian and Lori and their endeavors. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any other public comments?
I have a lot to read.
Oh, yes. So Neil, uh, London Neal, why don't you?
I'm going to read them in the order that I received them. Okay, just so you know. So nobody feels slighted if they, if theirs isn't in first. So from Brian Kelly, to whom this concerns, the lodge has created a community-friendly establishment in an underserved area of East Fairfax and West San Anselmo, an area distant from the downtowns of either city. Residents of this part of the Ross Valley finally have a place they can easily get to via foot or bike, reducing car trips in this part of the Ross Valley. It also happens to be family-friendly, allowing for easy trips by bike or foot for the whole family, even families with babies or infants in strollers. Allowing outdoor dining at the lodge will be a net positive. And from Whitney Ball. Hello, I'm writing to encourage the planning commission to approve use permit application twenty-five for outdoor dining at the lodge. I watched firsthand as the Buckners worked tirelessly to restore and preserve this historic building in our community. As soon as the doors to the lodge finally opened for business, it quickly became a gathering place for many of us in both San Anselmo and Fairfax. The indoor space is very limiting and if this permit were approved, many of us could, could, could continue enjoying our time outside the lodge. Lodge is a terrific, family-friendly spot that many of us walk and ride our bikes to. Allowing the ongoing outdoor dining at the lodge would be a wonderful addition to our community as there are so few options available. Additionally, when school starts, this would create another wonderful meeting place for our young students to eat their lunches quickly so they can get back to class. The staff at the lodge has given back so much to our community during COVID. They prepared hundreds of meals for healthcare workers and homebound residents in Marin and is, is a business partner with both YES as well as LEAP in the San Geronimo Valley. The approval of this permit will enable the Buckners to keep, the Buckners to keep their small business going. At a time like this, and as we enter the unknown future, this, the commission should be doing everything they can to create opportunities to support its small business owners and highly regarded members of our community in any way possible. Thank you, Whitney Ball. From Bruce, I don't know how to pronounce his last name, Goudy, Goudy. Hi Linda, I dropped off a request to have a, oh, wait a minute, that's not one of them. Oh, no. Yes, it is. A perm, uh, I dropped off a request to have a permanent permit resubmitted after the one hundred twenty day COVID temporary permit expires. We've only had a week notification regarding this. What concerns me are, one, open and closing hours for week, weekdays and weekends for the outside and the inside area after the COVID ban is lifted. Two, the amount of tables, is there sufficient parking for both areas once the ban is lifted? Three, exterior lighting. And four, I know my neighbors discussed this with Lori, no loud music, live or sound systems, acoustical. Acoustical, yes, he says. By having the business open under a temporary permit, it will allow all of us to assess the situation. I believe Lori and Brian have integrity and the best interest of the neighborhood at heart. But if they sold the place or any number of things happened, it would be beyond control. Thank you for your time, Bruce Goudy. Okay, and from Mark Waltering. As a former twenty-year Fairfax resident, we still frequently visit Fairfax and patrons of the lodge and our patrons of the lodge restaurant. I would like to encourage the planning commission to approve use permit, use permit application twenty-five, agenda item number one, at the six eighteen planning commission meeting for outdoor dining at the lodge. There are many reasons to support this request. We encourage the utilization of all efforts to move dining outside so we can enjoy the beauty of the Fairfax Marin County area. COVID-19 is not going away and outdoor dining provides the lowest level of risk of contracting the virus. The Buckners restored and preserved this historic building in our town, but inside capacity is very limited. The Buckners restored and preserved this historic building in our town, but inside capacity is very limiting. Approving this use permit would allow more customers to enjoy the lodge while still keeping the overall capacity modest. With regard to the historic nature of the property, it was one of the first commercial properties in Fairfax, opened in 1908 as the Old Timer Saloon. Historically, the Sagali and Arbeini families used the outdoor portion of the property as much as the interior, interior, planting fruit trees, dining outside, and even building a bocce ball court, which was used extensively throughout the 20th century. It only seems right that the property should be able to be used, utilized in its historic sense. The use permit is consistent with use permits granted to other businesses in the commercial highway zone for outdoor dining, Iron Springs, Good Earth, et cetera. It only seems fair that the lodge should be giving this, given the same accommodations. Any opposition to this application based on noise or nuisance are unfounded. The lodge is bordered by a car wash on the west whose pressure washers and vacuums drown out any conversational noise from the garage. Furthermore, Sir Francis Drake Boulevard borders the lodge to the north, further drowning out any noise. All of the neighbors sharing the property lines with the lodge support this application. And even the neighbors directly across the street support the application. Thank you for your consideration, Mark Waltering. This is from Chris Gerner. Hello, I've been a sleepy hollow resident since 2001. I've always loved the building and location that is now the lodge. And I was very excited when it became a restaurant and community gathering place. I fully support outdoor dining becoming permanent at the lodge. Our community is perfect for this and it is, and it is in short supply. I hope that Fairfax and San Anselmo will allow and promote outdoor seating at all cafes and restaurants. Stay well, Chris Gerner. And then from Vincent Tracy Genovese. To whom it may concern, I'd like to share my support for the lodge and their request to continue outdoor seating and patio area. I've lived in San Anselmo for 18 years and currently own a home less than a quarter of a mile from the lodge. While it's convenient to walk or ride my bike with my family to the lodge, it provides more than a destination for food or drink. It's a community hub, a gathering place for family, friends, locals, and visitors alike to meet for lunch, a drink, or meet up for a mountain bike ride. The temporary patio extension has been very well received and is a much-needed addition, which locals and area residents and visitors have come to appreciate during this COVID-19 environment. The natural outdoor seating is a great way to enjoy the beauty of Fairfax and San Anselmo in a low-impact way that is away from Sir Francis Drake Boulevard and, and not close to traffic. Not to mention allowing for more safe social gathering while providing service and sharing community. The lodge and its clientele are mature and respectful people as such value and, and as such value and respect their neighbors. Thus mitigating any fear of noise disruption for those in close proximity to either the main building or the proposed outdoor seating area. I hope you will support this proposal and approve the permit so we can continue to enjoy endless summer evenings, early morning coffee and late afternoon gatherings at our family-friendly local lodge. Best, Vincent Tracy, Genovese. From Tom Wraith, dear planning commission, I'm writing to encourage the planning commission to approve use permit application 20-5, agenda item number one at the 618 Planning Commission meeting for outdoor dining at the lodge. There are many reasons to support this request. In the spirit of brevity, I won't enumerate them here, but please know the neighborhood would benefit. Thank you for considering sincerely, Tom Wraith. Okay. This is from Tim, Tim Swan. Hello, we'd like to encourage the planning commission to approve use permit application 20-5, agenda item number one at the 618 Planning Commission meeting for outdoor dining at the lodge. Oh, I think I already read this, didn't I? Oh, sorry. I've read that one already, I think. If anyone, I don't like, this one sounds really familiar, but I'll read it again because it's a different name. Tim Swan, we'd like to encourage the planning commission to approve the use permit. We're fortunate to live in a spectacular area with great weather and natural beauty. It seems only obvious we should be encouraging the utilization of all efforts to move dining outside so we can enjoy the tremendous environment we get to call home. COVID-19 is not going away and a vaccine seems uncertain with regards to any type of firm timeline. Making temporary use permits, allowing outdoor dining on private property permanent seems only logical moving forward. The lodge has created a community-friendly establishment in an underserved area of East Fairfax and West San Anselmo, an area distance from the, distant from the downtowns of either city. Residents of this part of the Ross Valley finally have a place they can easily get to via foot or bike, reducing car trips in this part of the Ross Valley. It also happens to be family-friendly, allowing for easy trips by bike or foot for the whole family. Allowing outdoor dining at the lodge will be a net positive for neighbors and customers nearby. The Buckners restored and preserved this historic building in our town, but inside capacity is limited. Approving this use permit would allow more customers to enjoy the lodge while keeping the overall capacity modest. And then I did read this because it talks about the Old Timer Saloon, but it's a different name. So anyway, I'm not going to read that again. And then from Gina Finer, dear Fairfax Town Council, but she means commission. It's come to my attention that this Thursday, 6:19 at your town council meeting, she means 6:18 at your planning commission meeting concerns a use permit granting permanent permit for the lodge to have outdoor seating and service. I'm writing in full support of granting this permit. The lodge is a wonderful community gathering place. The clientele is respectful and predominantly live in our community. This is a responsible establishment that will adhere to any issues that arise, and I sincerely hope you grant them this permanent permit. Gina Finer. And then Lindsay, Lindsay Cross says, dear Fairfax Planning Commission, my husband and I are writing in support of Lori and Brian Buckner's application for a use permit for outdoor seating adjacent to their small restaurant, the lodge, which is within 300 feet of our home. We have been customers since they opened and are excited for the potential of a more permanent outdoor seating area that's walkable from our house and allows us to bring our small dog and enjoy the outdoors. After growing up in San Anselmo and Fairfax, we returned and purchased our home several years ago. And one of the best parts of this neighborhood is walkability to shops and restaurants. We have always found the patrons of the lodge to be courteous, family-friendly, and many who come by live in nearby neighborhoods or stop in after a hike or a bike ride. We have never noticed large crowds and the parking lot is rarely full, suggesting that many arrive on foot or bike as we do. In the fall during the power outages, Lori and Brian went above and beyond during another tough time to provide coffee and food for their customers. We recently enjoyed a quick breakfast outside this past Sunday, and we hope we have the opportunity to do so for many Sundays to come. This stretch of Sir Francis Drake has long been primarily zoned commercial and the lodge is a special gathering spot for nearby neighbors in Fairfax and San Anselmo. It has been a wonderful addition. I cannot imagine any additional noise that would be of any material impact, given the traffic noise that inherently exists on Sir Francis Drake Boulevard already. In closing, it is imperative that we do everything we can to support small businesses and restaurants during this time. And equally important beyond, as a shift in consumer behavior will last long after the temporary permit expires. The lodge has had the challenge of not being in the main downtown Fairfax district, and as such, the town of Fairfax should take all reasonable mess, measures to ensure our small businesses, especially restaurants, can succeed and benefit our community long-term. We are rooting for the success of the lodge and see it as a no-brainer for the planning commission to approve this application. Okay. Somehow I've managed to. Okay. And then Ash, Ashley Emmerich, hi there. I understand the lodge is applying to have outdoor dining and I want to express my strong support and favor of that. I grew up on Hawthorne Avenue. The location of the lodge used to be a hair salon where I got my haircut as a kid. And now as an adult and a mother, I'm delighted to see a family-friendly, friendly establishment in my neighborhood that my son and I can walk to and sit outside without COVID fears. I've never heard or seen any noise problems with the lodge and it's a delight to see the building being used again. I'm hopeful that you will grant the lodge their permit on a permanent basis and that I and my neighbors can continue to have outdoor access to a great place. Please feel free to contact me with any questions. Okay, somehow I, somehow I lost, there were two people with concern. So that's Jim Donahue. Hang on a minute. Myself all this confabulated here. Well, anyway, okay. So here's one from Bruce Goudy. And he, he spoke earlier in favor of it with some concern. So he had an additional concern that he added. And it says, Linda, I have to look at this from the view that the COVID restrictions are over in the building and now outside are at maximum capacity. I know this sounds crude, but I don't think they have the urinals for that much coffee and beer. That became a not-so-funny problem the one day when it was wide open. Thank you again for your time. Bruce. So. I guess if, anyway, I think that's it.
Okay, thank you, Linda. That's, that's really good. From my count, it sounds like the eyes have it, but there are no more, are there any more public comments? Mamie, just one second, just one second. Okay. If hearing no more public comments at the moment, we will.
Please don't close until I've had a chance to ask the applicant a question, if you don't mind.
Okay, go ahead.
If the applicant is still on the line, I just want to ask about what his neighbor indicated about the discussion that you guys have had about the location of the tables and the fact that you moved them today. And whether you think this proposal would benefit in terms of good relations with your neighbors by postponing it to allow for you to submit a different drawing that maybe incorporated things like the planters? And if in fact you decide to move those tables that are currently by the barn, the new location for that?
Yeah, you know, the applicant did that. I certainly wouldn't want to have my house somewhere where, you know, I felt I was under siege. And so, yeah, you know, I think, I think there's mitigating steps that can be taken to, you know, try and, and minimize the noise as, as much as possible. I had mentioned, you know, the ability to put some tables over along the fence with the car wash. You know, that, again, it gets to the tables further away from Mr. Donahue's house. And then of course, the noise from the car wash, I mean, you know, I've got vacuums out there, pressure washers in the street, you know, really help drown that out. So not opposed to trying to make, you know, things better for everybody.
Can I, since Mamie brought this idea up, I have another idea is perhaps putting some signage back by the fence of near the Donahue's property that sort of says, you know, please be quiet in consideration of neighbors or something like that.
No, that, I think that's a great idea. We put some signage out there already. You know, my experience with signage is you have to put a lot of it out there and, and be pretty clear on what you're asking for with people. And so I think that's a, a good suggestion. You know, we, we don't want the place to be a bar. We don't want it to be a loud beer garden. That's not what we're trying to do. I, I do like to see kids in back playing and having a good time. I, it warms my heart to see that. But I can see how, you know, with Jim's property being right next to that playground, you know, it being too much of a good thing. So I, I can respect that. You know, there was a comment about kids playing on the, the daycare's playground. I, I've never seen it, but you know, I'm, I'm, I'm there so much. I'm shocked that I wouldn't have seen it. I feel like I live down there. But I guess potentially that could happen. So I'm working with the daycare people to get a lock on that and then, you know, just coaching my staff to be extra diligent as we, we move operations outside. You know, we want to be good neighbors. We're not, we're not looking to create a, a never-ending party there. The, we close early. It's just, you know, it's, it's not that kind of place. That's not the intent.
Okay, Mamie, does that, does that do it for you on that question?
Well, thank you very much. Yeah, I'm, I'm done.
Okay. Now we will close the public hearing portion and bring it back to the commission for comments, please. Okay, Mamie.
I mean, I guess because of the different designs that we were looking at for the permanent and the temporary and the changes that were made with respect to the, you know, the tabletops on the redwood side and the picnic tables and things on the other side by the barn. And given the discussions that the applicants are having with the neighbors and trying to weigh the interests of the neighbors and the community and the applicants, I feel like we might, you know, postpone this for one month tops and, and try and see if we can get another drawing that incorporates the things that the applicant has told us. And if there is a way to address some of the concerns that the Donahues have, then we could take this up next month. So, you know, it sounds like the applicant is willing to do that. I didn't ask him how much time he might need to do that, but I obviously want us to keep this moving ahead without delay. You know, and, and I think in the interim, the understanding is the applicants continue to operate under the current temporary allowances, right?
Yes.
Any other commissioner comments? Yes, Commissioner Swift, then Gonzalez Parver.
And I, and I think coming back in a month, considering, you know, that they're still trying to work out the tables and, and what's the best layout for this, I think is a good idea. They're still operating under the TUP, so there's no loss of that ability to have the outdoor dining while we work out the permanent solution. But I did have a couple of comments as well. We talked a little bit about the redwood grove. And those are heritage coast redwoods in there. I'm concerned with the foot traffic in there as well as the seating that it's impacting that ground, which is not good for those redwoods. So I would ask, you know, if we are looking to bring this back, I would ask the applicant to look at perhaps other areas for that seating. But if, you know, that couldn't be found, then I would definitely want to look at like six to 12 inches of mulch maintained on that area permanently so that we don't impact those redwoods. I went back and looked at the Arborus report from 2017 for the lodge and those heritage coast redwoods are large. Some of them are like between 20 and 30 inches in diameter. So I wouldn't want to impact them. So that would be one. Also, going forward, the parking for this is in the back of the, of the lot. But it is overgrown and there's bushes back there and I find it hard that anybody would know that that would be where the lodge's parking is. So I would like to, and, and I went back there and looked and there was an old beauty bar parking sign behind the brush upon the fence. I would like to see that area cleaned and have it identified as, as the parking for, for slots for the parking back there. We talked a little bit about the drive-through and going in, I think, from the east and coming out the west and having that as, as one circle. The building has, and I don't think they were there when it came before us in 2017, I'm not sure. But if you look at the east and west side of the building, both of those have a signage that says park with a directional arrow to the back of the building. So it's really kind of telling people that they can go both ways in and it's not a one circle, either going from east to west or, which I think was, I was hearing was originally what was. a one circle, either going from east to west or, which I think was, I was hearing was originally what was outlined. So I think, you know, looking at that signage, however, it ends up with the drive-through that we take one of those down. And then going to the resolution and the staff report where there was a recommendation to have native and drought tolerant plants in those planter boxes. I see no reason for that. We're not replacing landscaping in the ground. And I think, you know, going forward, we should have, the applicant should have the ability to, to plant in those planter boxes what he thinks are appropriate for that space in the back. But I do agree that with Commissioner Newton, that I think continuing this to come back with more set plan on the, on the table and would be good.
Okay, thank you. Actually, I have a question for Commissioner Rodriguez. You sent a picture, a photograph that you took. And I'm just curious about why that is.
I'm sorry, I didn't mean it to be distributed to everyone. I was going to ask to refer to it if I spoke about it, but I decline at this point. But just for the record, I visited the site and I was taking a picture of the people who were in the back seated and the children playing just beyond where the, the operator of the restaurant was talking about the runway. They were in the runway playing and I had a picture of that. Linda has it available if you want to see it, but I, I don't want to speak about it right now.
Yeah, and I apologize. I was afraid that you wanted me to share it at the meeting and I wasn't going to be able to. So that was why I forwarded it. So.
Right, thank you. I just, just was wondering about it. Other commissioner comments? Commissioner Caroline?
Hi, yes, I was, I'm just going to also propose a continuance. I think we might need more than a month. I mean, right now they already have their temporary use permit. So I think they have time. I think they might need through the summer to kind of figure out what, what works best for them and what works best, what works best for the, for the neighbors. And the placement of the tables. I mean, if we were going to approve it tonight, I was concerned that we weren't going to have the correct documents to depict what we approved in the, in the, in the file for ongoing, you know, where the, where the correct placement of the tables and all that were. So I, I think we need to make sure that we know exactly where the tables are. And I am concerned about the ones that are next to the barn, considering the proximity to the residential uses that it's, it's near. I'd also like to see if there's a way that since we're moving the tables in the front that were on the sidewalk, which necessitated, which mean that they need that rope barricade? If the fact that the tables are on the other side of that, that, you know, the old hitching post wall, do we, do they need that, do they need to have the rope barricade anymore? I mean, we've had other applicants come in and they, when we've asked about the ABC rules and I don't think there's been, like, we needed to have a strict demarcation, but it seems to me that that stone wall serves the same type of purpose. So I'd like to see if, if that could be investigated or not. And I am concerned about the signage too, on the front of the building. It looks, it's, it's hard to read. It's cluttered. I mean, this is, this is a historic building. It's got the prominent sign on the building right now and I really am concerned about any other kind of signage detracting from that. So, but otherwise, I, I, I think it's a great idea. I mean, I think that, I think that when your, the application first came through, we were thinking that outdoor seating would be something that you might need. So I'm happy to see you back here and trying to work these out. So those are my comments.
I believe Commissioner Gonzalez Parver was next. Thank you.
Yes. I was going to say, there's no doubt that Lori and Brian are an asset to the community and I have no doubt that they're going to try to work with their neighbors and, and come up with a, a, you know, really good solution for everybody. Because there is so much ambivalence about the future and I'm not sure that the Caterpillar Academy is operating at maximum capacity. I think, I think we do need to continue this. I, I don't think, especially with the temporary use permit, that's a great opportunity to experiment and figure it out without permanence. Because I think we're looking at a permanent solution in a very temporary time, an uncertain time. Specifically when it comes to children, you know, and the safety and how, and, you know, the I'm sure there are ways to control or to buffer the activities, but there, especially if there is alcohol consumption going on. The two things kind of require some, you know, I think more well thought out buffer or buffering and thinking about other projects that have come before us with outdoor seating. And, you know, we usually want to see a little more in terms of landscaping and buffering and lighting. Because it is pretty close in proximity to the other buildings. So I, I agree with Laura. I think it's going to be, I, I think you're going to need more than a month to really figure out what works best. And even at that, you may come back later to amend it, your plan. But I think, yes, I am in favor of this project. I think it's a great idea. I'm glad the outdoor seating is being pursued, but I think we need to continue this.
Okay, and Commissioner Fargoso?
Thank you, through the chair. I also agree. It's been very confusing having several different sets of plans and, and I know the owner, I appreciate hearing that Brian and Jim are talking and the owner has been moving some of those tables that are very close to Jim and Aaliyah's kitchen. I, I appreciate those efforts very much. I'd like to see those continued. I, I would really like to see a, a final completed, this is it plan before we approve it. I have no, no concerns about the approval other than we need to know where things are going specifically. I'm also very much in favor of keeping the three tables and chairs approved by San Onselmo within that concrete wall. I'm very concerned about the rope and those big wooden bollards that are out there. I believe it, it does not give full ADA compliance and is difficult for a, a family with a couple of kids walking on. You have, some of you have to go inside, some of you have to go outside. I think that having that pony wall be the barrier would meet that and, and free up the sidewalk. I also would not like to see the signs, the proposed signs come back with the different blade signs. There was like a half a dozen blade signs that got, had been installed under the roof. The commission spent a lot of time when this came before us originally to open up the lodge again. And we were all very happy and pleased that the historic sign would be brought back as close as possible to the historic sign. And we were not interested in adding lights or additional signage. And I, I don't believe I would be amenable to a whole series of blade signs as they had before. I would also be very much opposed to any kind of music that can be heard outdoors. I think that's nothing but a quagmire in this community. Other than that, I'm, I'm delighted to see this moving forward and that they currently have a temporary permit. So I don't believe that stalling and having it come back so we get a clear record seems like it would be a problem for the owners. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
You're welcome. Any, any other commissioner comments at this time? Well, I have, I have a couple. One, I would like to see the hours in condition two be better than just summer and winter. I think it needs to be a little more explicit to cover the year since this is a CUP intended to be permanent. I have a language change to paragraph three of the, under whereas paragraph three, where it says materials comma signage, I would say approved signage. My overall impression is this is a terrific project. Glad the, you know, the lodge is, is open for business. You have a wonderful menu. You're attracting, attracting obviously a good local crowd from the comments. The public comments appear to me to be very favorable. However, there are some issues. I also had a problem with the different sets of plans and not quite knowing where things are and finding out tonight that some of the tables will be moved to help with the Donahue's sound issue. So we kind of need a final, you know, I, I'm also somewhat in favor of a continuance of a month to get a final good permanent kind of set of plans since we're issuing a potentially permanent permit here. So those are basically my comments. And Commissioner Newton?
Yeah, I guess I wonder if we can give the applicant up to a certain amount of time. How long continuance could the applicant get and then they can bring it back sooner if they wanted to, I guess.
Yeah, I think you can just continue it off calendar and then when they're ready to come back, we'll put them on the next agenda.
So would that be a month or what?
Well, yeah, if you continue it off calendar, it gives them enough time. It gives them however much time they need. You meet once a month. That we would have to have their drawings a minimum of 10 days before whatever hearing they're trying to be heard at in order to do the staff report and get the noticing out in the public, in the packet, right?
Yes. Commissioner Rodriguez?
I'd like to make a motion to move application number 20-5, which is for 1573 Sir Francis Drake Boulevard off the calendar to enable the property owner to work with staff on addressing the planning commission comments.
Okay, so do I hear a second?
I would like to second that motion.
I see Commissioner Swift has a hand up.
Yeah, just a question. Are we clear that the applicant is amenable to that?
He was.
Okay.
Is, is the applicant still available? Usually we, we come back to the applicant when there's a continuance being proposed. See if that's, you know, workable.
Yes, I'm.
So there's a second to the motion to continue the matter off calendar for now. So Linda, Neil, I guess.
I checked, I checked the, the participant. It looks like the, the applicant did have their hand raised. So maybe you want to check with them.
Okay, are they, are they here?
Let me run into the next room and make sure they're watching for him.
Lori Bruckner has her hand raised.
Yeah, that's what I saw.
I'm not seeing any hand raised electronic ones.
Yeah. You're going to have to swipe to the participants.
Yeah, you have to see all participants and Lori Bruckner has her hand raised.
So Tamela, I think, is working on that right now to get them hooked up.
Sorry about that. You should be live now.
There you go.
You can hear us?
Yes.
Okay. Well, thank you for all the thoughtful input and comments. I, I guess, just being candid, I'm we couldn't get this completed tonight and it, it is upsetting that the temporary use permit, which was basically done as a lifeline to our business and other struggling businesses in the area, you know, not as a test or hurdle to get over for a permanent use permit. We've been very good neighbors. We're a net positive here to the Ross Valley. The most common request we get is, is simply to be able to dine outdoors on our property and enjoy the, the wonderful outside setting that we have. And, and that's all we're asking for. As I started my talk earlier, you know, it's uncertainty that really wears on a business owner in times like this. The temporary use permit that we've been given is only out four to six months. We all know COVID is going to be here for a lot longer than that. There's no vaccine. There's no treatment on the horizon. People are scared to come inside a restaurant. And we really need some certainty about our future. It's really hard to make any kind of longer term investment in, in staff and equipment for our business or financing. If we don't know that we're going to be able to have some kind of permanent ability to seat guests outside while this is going on and maintain revenue at some kind of threshold level. And I just feel like y'all are acting as though it's just business as usual and it's normal times and it's not. We've been suffering since February. It's five months. The process of getting this business up and running was so much higher than what everyone else has to go through in town because we're, we did such a big project. We had to bring it under all the fire and life safety code compliance with sprinklers, with a line from the street, with all the ADA requirements. These are expenses that other guys don't have to go through. They're grandfathered in. And it seems a really small ass to put a few tables out back. And it seems like it's really being overanalyzed here. So those are my comments. It's, it's just deeply disappointing. You know, I, I feel like I reached out to Mr. Donahue to try to make things better by moving a few tables around. And I'm happy to do that, but now we need a whole nother drawing in another month to get any kind of certainty for our future. So it's, 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 it's just disappointing. That's all I have to say.
So I'm not sure what that comment means. We're looking to take the matter off calendar and I guess staff can correct me if I'm wrong, but you, you can speed things up by coming up with drawings and solutions to some of these issues very quickly and within 10 days prior to the next month's hearing, I believe, right?
Correct.
So
Okay.
Don't, don't, don't be too disparaging. We're, we're not trying to, you know, we know, we, we're all very aware of the situation as it is. And things have been accommodated. I mean, the town council passed this temporary permit process, which gave you the possibility to do this now. So if you can, I, I would recommend if, if you can, you know, take our, take your neighbors and our comments to heart and see if you can address these issues fairly quickly. We can get right back on calendar. And, you know, I think a lot of us feel positive about the project as a whole.
Fair enough.
So I believe there's a motion on the table and a second.
Correct.
Continue the matter off calendar. Is that as simple as that?
Yep.
Okay, so then we need to.
Okay, Caroline?
I.
Aye.
Gonzalez Barber?
Aye.
Newton?
Aye.
I'm going to be your no, because I think we could do it through a condition of approval tonight and let it go.
Okay. Fragoso?
Aye.
Swift?
Aye.
Chair Green? Oh, you're muted. Uh oh, Phil, you're muted. Can you hear me?
I'm going to be another no vote on this continuance because I also thought the matters were not that complicated and could have been addressed tonight despite my comment I just made.
All right. So motion for continuance passes.
Okay, thank you. And let's see, is there appeal mentioned here?
No, no, a continuance is not a decision, so they can't appeal a continuance.
So I would encourage the applicant to speed things up, get things set. I don't think we're in the mood to wait till the COVID goes away, which could be years from now to approve this. And I think that we're, we'll probably move on when you get back with us. Thank you very much. So you understand that the matter is continued off calendar. Right. Okay, so moving on to the next calendar item, which is number two, consideration and recommendation to the town council of a digitized version of the Ridgeline Scenic Corridor map, Visual Resources Map Number Nine, it's called. And take it away, Ben. You look like you're in your zen room.
Yeah, we all have our little approach towards the background. And this has been a Ford device night. Fortunately, we scrambled around and I now have audio and visual. Referencing our baseline maps, staff has been in the process of digitizing the baseline maps, as your commissioner is aware. Wow, I just went offline. Actually, you can still hear me, can't you?
We can still hear you.
Yeah.
Well, leave it to Beaver. The video is gone, but in any event, I'll keep talking. The town developed a bunch of baseline maps in 1974 and have been working with them since. However, as previously noted in a discussion about landslide hazard maps, there are several challenges with the use of those maps. And referencing again the landslide hazard maps, what was recognized at that time was that there was a need to update that map and to provide a geo reference and digitized version of that map. And the same basic needs to bring those very good baseline documents into the 21st century occur with respect to the Ridgeline Development Map and the references in various documents. Specifically, when looking at the zoning ordinance in Chapter 17.60, Ridgeline Development, it refers in the definition section as well as the general requirements to a Visual Resources Map Number Nine. Staff isn't quite sure, again, where this elusive map number nine is, where it exists, if it ever did. It does not occur in the current general plan. And it does not appear to have ever been located in the 1974 general plan. So nothing by that name. However, it would appear in looking at the Visual Resources Map, not number nine, but just the plain Visual Resources Map, and you can see an attachment that that map is attached to your staff report. And that is in the current general plan. It does include Ridgeline Scenic Corridors. That's the area demarcated in green. And staff believes that that is what was intended to be referenced. Even given that we do have sort of the equivalent of this Visual Resources Map Number Nine in our current general plan, we have a problem with the nomenclature that it's incorrectly referred to in the zoning ordinance. The second issue is that, again, the map is 46 years old. And as you can see from the overlay that staff consultant, GIS consultant, did, that the area of the town is but a small fraction of the total area shown on that map. In fact, there's a little smidgen on the east portion of the town where the town border actually runs off that map. So that's another challenge where you have a document that's a lot larger scale, or smaller scale, I should say, than what the town area is. And I believe, although I don't have a lot of information about this, but there were a number of jurisdictions that were involved in creation of these baseline map resources. And so when they were doing that, they included a broader area than just Fairfax. Another issue with respect to this current map has to do with accuracy and the type of information that both occurs in whatever version of a visual document we provide and the information that can be accessed. And this is the beauty of geographic information systems, is that you can now digitize this information and geo reference it. And by geo reference, they're just actually locating the physical features that are referenced on the map to actual physical features on planet Earth. We have the ability to use LiDAR and other aerial mapping techniques to very accurately locate where physical features are placed in space and put them on maps. And that's what we have done in the attachment entitled Visual Resources Map Number Nine, June 18, 2020, where this is located to within, I believe, a foot or so of actual physical features on this planet or specifically in Fairfax. And we now have a very accurate version of the Visual Resources Map. Furthermore, with the GIS mapping, we can access layers in that system. For example, property boundaries. And this is, again, very important when we're attempting to use this and to apply it to projects. You have to kind of understand what's in, what's out, where the boundary of Ridgeline Scenic Corridors are relative to those property boundaries or any improvements that may be proposed on those boundaries in order to apply whatever zoning regulations or other policies that should be applicable to those properties. So staff recommends that the planning commission adopt the attached Resolution 20-5, recommending to the town council that they adopt the digitized version of Fairfax Visual Resources Map Number Nine as the official map for zoning ordinance reference purposes. And I'm prepared to answer any questions you may have.
Commissioner Michelle?
Commissioner Michelle. Ben, I wanted to ask you a clarifying question. So in this, and first of all, this is really great stuff. I commend staff for really making this happen because I think the geospatial information could be provided to developers, to property folks who can then overlay it on their site plan. We can get more accurate information. So this is really good news. But what I wanted is clarification around, are we deleting? I have like four or five questions. Are we deleting the general plan map or we're keeping that in and we're only opening up the zoning ordinance? That's the first question.
Okay, the general, why does my image keep kicking out? The general plan map would remain. However, insofar as the general plan map isn't what's referenced in the zoning ordinance, and in order to incorporate that general plan map, we would have to amend the zoning ordinance. This simply is a clarification that we've got this Visual Resources Map Number Nine and this digitized version is what that is.
Okay, so on the Attachment B, the yellow line that you've now added, is that the town limit line or the sphere of influence line?
That's the town limit line.
What references, what will, what references to this Ridgeline Development Map? In other words, what, excuse me, what would, what would trigger application of Chapter 17.060, the Ridgeline Development Ordinance? That's the question.
This, this map would eliminate any uncertainty about the applicability of the Ridgeline Developments regulations because it would say that, yes, we do have this Ridgeline Development Map, Visual Resources Map Number Nine. And so therefore, when somebody's looking at the HRD regulations or the Ridgeline Regulations, excuse me, they would have a map that they could point to and staff and decision makers would be able to point to it.
Wait a minute, I think I missed something. So are you saying that, wait a minute, so is it property zoning designation that would trigger application of 17.060? Or is it, you said HRD? Or what triggers this special code?
What it would do, it's in the, hang on, let me look at this. It's in the zoning ordinance, Chapter Ridgeline Development. So in the Ridgeline Development chapter of the zoning ordinance, it includes two references to Visual Resources Map Number Nine. So it almost functions as a, as a overlay zone where it's, it basically says if you lie within the area referred to in the Visual Resources Map Number Nine, then these regulations apply to. And the obvious applicability or application would be for Ridgeline properties.
So are you saying then, just then looking at the Visual Resources Map Number Nine, Attachment C, if, how would I, as a property owner or developer, by looking at this new outline in black, know when to go to that, that new zoning code or to that zoning code?
That's a great question. What would happen is we will add that as a layer to Marin map. And so it will be available to both staff and the public when they reference particular assessors parcels or, I believe, even street addresses. They can click on the layer that will be Visual Resources Map Number Nine, and it will show where the boundaries of the green areas lie relative to their property boundaries.
Okay, because I'm trying to figure out what is triggering it, you know, how.
Right. You.
And then is the only.
I thought about trying to include property boundaries, but the problem is, is the map turns black because there are thousands of parcels in Fairfax. And this isn't about particular parcels. This is about adopting or applying a digitized version of that map to the zoning ordinance. So it's a townwide exercise. But underneath, underneath this diagram, this paper version that you have, it's really an electronic document and it has all the layers that are in Marin map, including and specifically property boundaries.
Oh, I see. Okay. So then the only other question that I have, and I'll have comments later, is the only proposed change that you're proposing right now is Chapter 17, to Chapter 17.060, are those sections highlighted in yellow?
We're actually not proposing any changes to Chapter 17.060. What we're simply saying is that.
You are because you're modifying the map, right?
Correct.
So you're, that's how.
We're not modifying the map. We're just saying that we're digitizing the map.
Well, no, no.
Change the name of the map so that we actually have what the zoning ordinance refers to by name.
See, this is, that was my first question because right now you've got a code in front of you that's referring to Visual Resource Map Nine. And in the staff report, it was saying that that is, was an open space map. But now we're creating this, we're digitizing this map and we're calling it Nine. And so we're actually amending this code then because this would now be an attachment, right? To this code.
That's, Mimi, who has a brilliant mind for these sorts of things, seems to be very anxious to offer her wisdom on the subject.
Mimi, you're way crazy. Go ahead.
I'm very frustrated not to have gone first. Sorry, Michelle. Linda and Ben, after Cindy asked me to see what I could figure out about the Visual Resources Map Number Nine, I managed to find the reference, sorry, in the old 1974 general plan, open space element, which I forwarded. Hey, come here. Back to Cindy with a copy to both Linda and Ben. And this was recently. And that Visual Resources Map Number Nine is very clearly referenced in a list of 12 maps. And what my question to Linda and Ben was, are those 12 maps on that document correlate to the hard copy maps that I delivered back to you guys during a planning meeting a while back? Now, the Visual Resources Map is Figure OS1, not S1, but OS1 in the general plan. And I believe that map, which is OS1, was the 1974 version of map number nine. Now, the visual resources, which are discussed in both, you know, I can't remember, both the conservation element and the open space element of the 1974 general plan, extends beyond the town boundary, specifically because it's related to the visual resources that are discussed throughout the general plan. Those visual resources include the hillsides that we can see, both from the gateways that are reflected on that map, which are where you come into town from the Sir Francis Drake, where you go out on Bolinas. So it's basically like the hillsides surrounding the town. And those visual resources are depicted in those shaded blob areas. There is, there is a provision in the land use section of our existing general plan that requires the updating of that OS1 map. And that is assigned to the Responsibility Open Space Committee, not the Planning Commission. And so one of the things I'd like to know is whether staff has coordinated on this effort. And I agree with Michelle. It's exciting to think we can digitize this. But I also want to make sure we do this in a comprehensive way that acknowledges what has gone on before and how it integrates overall into the general plan.
Could I ask Mimi a question? Mimi?
Yeah, sure, go ahead.
Does that map number nine, because you seem to know the open space element of the old general plan better than I do now because I've forgotten it at this point, is it referencing, is map number nine called suitability for open space, not Visual, the Visual Resources No?
I don't know if she knows the answer. Let me look. I think it's Visual Resources now. It actually has the exact name that is in the code now. And it's a list, but I got to pull it up. I got to go get that. You know, it's an 80-page document and I didn't print it out.
Because I'm remembering two maps that were, that were kind of similar and called out ridge lines, but the suitability for open space map had the ridge lines and it had high fire zones and it had hardwood forests. It like, it combined all the general plan maps into one called suitability for open space. So I'm just wondering if that open space element referenced nine as the suitability for open space and not as visual resources.
That's why I was hoping you could look at the hard copies.
Yeah.
That's why I was hoping you could look at the hard copies and compare them.
Because, well, maybe I'm making things more complicated.
While I'm looking for my email, Cindy has her hand up.
Yeah, and I could chime in also, is that I think one of the challenges with the 74 general plan is that the connection between references and actual diagrammatic documents wasn't clear. And I'd certainly like to go back and revisit that. But when we researched it, it, map number, you're saying, or you appear to be implying that visual, or map number nine, visual resources map number nine, is actually references 12 other maps? That's, that's where, and I would have to find that. This is, this may be a conversation that, that we need to take offline and continue, but-
Yeah, and I don't even want to speak, you guys, but I just found a disc that seems to have 12 maps that Ann Welsh, there's 12 general plan maps in this disc I just found, so I don't know.
Okay, but, so the question is, would there be any difference between any reference in the 1974 map, or the map number nine, wherever that's located? Yeah, they're not documents to which it refers. And what we are looking at tonight, which is the visual resources map with the ridgeline scenic corridors, because those ridgeline scenic corridors are clearly contained in that visual resources map.
If I might just say, I mean, 17.060020 talks about major ridges. And really, all it says is those areas located on visual resources map number nine. So, just, just, a comment really is, you know, these, these older maps from 1974 may be referenced as visual resources map number nine. But any map we have new today, and we can digitize, as Ben said, to the actual earth, would now be more accurate, and I think adaptable. And we can always call it visual resources map number nine. So if it's a better map, I don't, I don't know what the issue is, but let's hear from Cindy Swift.
Issue is we might be changing the name in the, in the-
So it seems to me, and it'll be great to look at the CD, but there were multiple maps, one to 12, there's a bunch of maps in the general plan, and their reference, and other maps are referenced in the code. But this one happens to be referenced in the code as, as map number nine. And probably the code should have been corrected to just say the visual resources map, and not identify it as map number nine potentially of those 12 maps. But I also had questions on the map as it's digitized, because now it has the town, the town's border on it. When you, when we talk in the general plan and planning, you've got like the town borders, you've got the town planning area, you've got the town sphere of influence. So what I'm concerned about, and I don't see on this map, is that we do have, as Mimi said, we've got visually significant areas outside the borders of our town, and I'm not, and maybe it's just how this map was printed, but I'm not seeing those on this map. And that concerns me, that we would be looking at this map just from the perspective of what is in the town's borders, and not the planning area, and not the sphere of influence, to get all those other areas in there.
To respond to that briefly, when you look at the, the two references in the zoning ordinance, one is the, is the definition, and those areas located on visual resources map number nine. But the applicable area, and I probably should have included this, 17.060030 general requirements, no building, comic accessory building, comma, or structure or modification thereof shall be erected within ridgeline scenic corridors as defined on visual resources map number nine, except in either of the following circumstances, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. So there may be some discussion about areas extraneous to the town, visual resources, et cetera. But the applicability of our zoning ordinance is limited to those areas within the town. And so when the decision was made to include the town boundaries, it was simply to say that as this is applied in our regulations, and this is just a fact, that you can only apply to what is within your jurisdiction. So that's why this digitized, geo-referenced version includes only town boundaries.
Okay, so, Mimi, and then Commissioner Rodriguez.
Yeah, one of the reasons I was hoping that before this come, you know, we make a decision about this, the open space committee was consulted, is because if you look at the map, attachment A, the area in green with the red line represents the ridgeline scenic corridors. Now, my recollection is that there was a separate drawing that Ann Welsh had when I first started on the open space committee in 2006 timeframe, that had separately hand-drawn ridgeline corridor that was the real one we were using for that purpose. So part of why I want to go back and compare the list, which I just took a screenshot of that one page of the old thing, and sent that to Ben and Linda. If you guys could share that screenshot, that would be great, but I don't know if you can. The, you know, so I don't know if, and some of the people that were on the open space committee who are still there, like Ruth Horn, may have a better recollection than I do about what map Ann was using when we were doing things like looking at the possible development of the top of upper Ridgeway. There was sort of a, an area that was going to need a fire road paved around, sort of where the wall property currently is up in that area. And there was a hearing at some point about that. And we, at that point, were looking at the ridgeline map to determine if, you know, that property was, you know, how far within that map it was. And I, I think these green areas on attachment A are probably indicative of what those ridgeline areas were that we were looking at then. But I'd almost rather want to ask Frank Egger, if, you know, or somebody about that old map. I'm thinking, you know, Ruth, or Frank, or somebody who had more familiarity in the early 2000s with that drawing, which was a little bit different than our attachment A. Over.
Can you guys see my screen to see what Mimi's talking about? Okay.
Yeah.
A1, right, yeah.
But I guess the question is, is somewhere there's a ref, there's a reference to visual resources map number nine constituting all of these 12 other documents?
No, it is listed here as number nine, Ben.
I, I understand what Mimi's saying, now that I found what I believe is Ann's electronic copies of these 12 maps, and they're numbered, and they correspond. When I look at map one, it's called the slope map. When I look at map nine, it's called the visual resources map. So they're numbered in the general plan that way. They're not labeled that way on the maps themselves, but the, the general plan calls them out by name and gives them a number. Does that make sense? See what I'm saying? So like, if I go to seven, and I pull up that map in the disc that I just found, which I don't, I looked for this before, I don't know why I couldn't find it. It's called the wildlife habitat diversity map. It's not, doesn't have a seven on it. The name corresponds to what's in the general plan and the number.
Okay, so that-
Which goes back to my statement that in the zoning code, accidentally, that visual resources map just had the map number nine added to it when it was referenced, where none of these other maps do.
Okay.
They're called out specifically in the, in title 17.
So then I guess the question for your commission to consider tonight, and this gets back to Commissioner Newton's comment about Fairfax Open Space Committee, which as you know, has not been able to meet during the COVID crisis, is that we have some idea that the former general plan referenced this map number nine, visual resources, which has been incorporated into the current general plan, and is now available in a digitized version for your commission's consideration. And accepting the fact that perhaps we should have a digitized version of areas extraneous to Fairfax, I'm not sure the applicability as referenced in the zoning ordinance, because the zoning ordinance simply applies to areas within the town's boundaries. And the idea here is to actually have a digitized version that you can look at property boundaries for the first time. I will also say that when our GIS person was doing the work on this visual resources map, some of those areas exogenous to the town of Fairfax were off by about 1,000 feet. So Fairfax itself, because of the ridgeline areas, was fairly accurate and true. But the 1974 map, it, the further out you go, the harder it is to make sure you nail the physical features to what's exactly featured. So, this in, in fact.
Can I ask a general question? Isn't the beauty of a digitized map that you can look at one area of it, and scroll over and look at another area of it, and you can widen your view and narrow your view, et cetera, like you can on Marin maps, right?
Zoom out, right, so you can really see a property, yeah.
Yeah, you can see Fairfax, and you could see the areas around Fairfax on a digitized map, right?
Yes, we didn't spend, I didn't instruct our GIS person to spend a lot of time geo-referencing areas outside the town. It gets more challenging, especially with open space areas within the town of Fairfax, for example. We could do street corners and things like that, because on one of those maps, they did show street corners. The, those 12 maps were internally true to each other, so some of them had streets. And so we were able to pick locations, plus with the LiDAR mapping that we're able to do, we were able to locate actual ridge lines extremely accurately. And so they do something called rubber sheeting, where they basically take the older hand-drawn maps and say, here's, here's where these actually exist on this planet, and, and adjust it. And then you end up, again, with something that you can apply to property boundaries. So to get to your comment, Phil, we could spend the time, or even just accept that if it's not down to the foot, or whatever it is we've attained in Fairfax, we could spend some time and do those areas outside Fairfax. And as you can see from the attachment, you know, probably three fifths, at least three fifths of the map areas outside Fairfax, we could, we could hire the GIS person to reference those areas and, and try to get a digitized geo-reference map that encover, that incorporates those areas of what is largely the county, but may also include some San Anselmo. But right now, the focus is to use, to update this map and get it to where it applies to properties, and get that accepted by the town.
Okay, Michelle, thank you.
And I'm still trying to understand the urgency of this compared to where my brain wants to go. So I just want to clarify, are you saying that this is not applicable in some ways to properties, or that somehow we are unable to apply chapter 17.060 to-
They're done, okay, just not share on this side.
That come forward? That's not how I understand this, because I'm real, I'm in agreement that we kind of need to tighten all of this up, unless that's the case. If the case is that that visual resource map cannot be referenced to projects right now, then that's a concern. But if it's not a concern, then I feel like we need to open up the ordinance and tighten up what's going on between 17.020 and 17.030 and 17.060 by adding an application section to this ordinance, by including the definitions of this visual significant areas, the ranges, the vista points, the gateways. What do those mean? How are they applicable? I'd be interested in talking a little bit more about that, the concept of, yes, ridges you can't develop, but then what about a certain distance below that? And kind of re-tinkering some of the heights that are in, in this code. And I love the idea of going back to the open space committee in some way. And I don't know how to, you know, whether we could initiate a joint planning commission, open space meeting, where they are then brought into our Zoom meeting, that, that would be one way to get some, some history or something going on. But I feel like there's a little gap or something in my understanding of the applicability of this map.
What I would say is, right now, the 1974 map would be very difficult to apply to any property, that the boundaries don't correspond to any lots, that there are inaccuracies on that map relative to actual physical features. So with the exception of maybe some obvious larger properties, you would, you would have a hard time in, in many cases, saying this is in, this is out. Another challenge is that when you get to the edge, for example, of these boundaries, the current one, you know, it's one thing if you have a property that's lying right on the knife edge of a ridge. I think you could probably make the argument, yeah, this is in. But when you're looking at the green areas and the widths of those, and where it starts and where it stops, I do not believe that you could use that 1974 map in any kind of meaningful fashion against those properties.
So we could in fact do a two-phase approval by one, approving the map tonight, but also initiate a general zoning amendment to chapter 17.060 to address other issues and collaborate with the open space committee and all of that.
Sure.
Commissioner Newton?
So Linda, could you open up visual resource map number nine from the CD? And make sure, can we see that? I would like to make sure that that's what we see as attachment A.
So hang on.
And my other, you know, again, I do believe that, you know, the applicability of the ridgeline ordinance and the map that goes along with the ridgeline ordinance, in, in my recollection, was a very special hand-drawn map. It was not necessarily this one that we see at attachment A. I'm very familiar with this one, attachment A, it has the hardwood.
This is the one that's showing up on Ann's as map number nine.
Okay, so that does look like the same one we see at attachment A. No, that's great, I just wanted to make sure. Thank you, Linda.
Okay, you're welcome.
All right.
Do I need to keep that up, or can I stop the screen share?
I'm, I'm good.
Yeah, you can stop.
Attachment A, they look identical to me, except for there's some cuts off, cutoffs in attachment A at the edges, but seems like the same one.
I don't want to rush you guys, but, I mean, I think I, I'm just, I don't know how long- I don't know how long I can leave these up without creating a problem for me.
No, go ahead.
No, that's good.
So I'm concerned about, again, leaving those, you know, changing the map and leaving those visually significant areas that are outside the town's exact boundaries off any map. Because I think they're part of our general plan and, and what we fall back on. And I do think that open space should be brought in as the general plan states to review these open space maps. I mean, I know open space did have one Zoom meeting. So those are my two concerns is having open space, not reviewing that, not being a part of this process and leaving areas outside the town's boundaries off any visual resources map.
To, to address that, my understanding though, we just had this talk is that we're not leaving anything out, that you can move this map around. It's digitized, so you can move it around however you like and go all the way to the ocean or all the way to Nevada.
I'm not clear that that was the answer we got, though.
I could clarify that, that what we showed was, what you see in attachments B and C are two scales of the same map. So attachment B is digitized and attachment C is the same digitized map zoomed in on Fairfax. So to clarify that, we could easily recommend adoption of attachment B, which shows the entirety of the visual resources map. Now, in terms of the Fairfax Open Space Committee's involvement, if that's a direction that your commission wants to go, we could, we could pursue taking it up with them. I was not aware that they were actually meeting digitally at this time.
Looks like we need to address Linda Neal, please.
I think Mimi was first.
Okay.
So the two terms in the language in the ordinance that are defined in 17060020 are the terms major ridges and ridgeline scenic corridors. When you look at the 1974 map, unless Linda puts it back up from the digital.
Let me put our, I can put it back up.
I think major ridges are not located, except maybe that top thing above the green ridgeline scenic corridors is supposed to be major ridges.
Yes.
So if you could go up to the top and like magnify that first. So I have a problem with both digital versions, because they aren't off of this digital version. And they must be like a scan of the old hard copy map where that top major ridges part of the.
Is this what you're trying to see, Mimi?
It doesn't even say ridge lines. It says, I mean, it said, doesn't even say major ridges. It ruffles.
Ridges, ridgeline scenic corridor, okay.
So the term in the code is major ridges. On the map, we've got ridge lines. And then the second term is ridgeline scenic corridors, which is in green, ridgeline scenic corridors. And then.
What I was talking about earlier.
Yeah, it is, but I'm just pointing it out with respect to the specific digital version that has not been transformed into the new digital version, because we've got an old scanned version transformed into a new digital version. So we've lost some of the data, i.e. that box in the top left corner that says ridges. However, for ridge lines. And however, what my concern is, is that the language in our definitions is not ridge lines, it's major ridges. And I'm trying to figure out, based on this map, if major ridges are depicted. Is that all the ridges that are, are outlined in green? I kind of need a little bit more time to figure this out. And you could go back through that old open space element and, you know, talk to some of the people who might recall this. And, you know, I've spent a lot of time with Frank Egger going through these old general plan elements, and I'd like to ask him his thoughts. So I'll just point these problems out with jumping in when I don't necessarily think a little bit more time is gonna, you know, hurt us that bad.
Okay, thank you, Linda Neal.
So I just wanted to speak to what Cindy was talking about. I mean, I understand why Ben is trying to eliminate the areas outside the city limits. But I am recalling that staff has actually used our general plan maps and those areas outside. We get, projects get routed to us from the county of Marin. And we often comment, like when things happen at Tanmarancho, and we have referred to the areas outside being shown on the general plan maps and like being a ridge line or, you know, being an area that's visually significant. So if you totally eliminate that information, we won't have that to cite when we're commenting on county projects that are in our sphere of influence.
Okay. That's, that's a good point.
One of the questions would be then, are we considering this a fairly neat Phase One step where we say that we've got in our zoning ordinance, a specific reference to something which actually does exist on a map? And as Commissioner Newton noted, we don't seem to have anything that, that is called a major ridge on any map, but that could probably be subject to further research. But in so far as applicability of zoning regulations and Chapter 17060 ridgeline development is concerned, we're dealing with visual, we're dealing with ridgeline scenic corridors in town. As I said, if, if it's the commission's preference, we could easily adopt the zoomed out version of attachment B for purposes of applicability of Chapter Seven, Chapter 7060. But the idea is we're just getting the digitized, accurate version of this map on the books and usable as a reference in applying it to future developments.
Can I ask a general question? Are we inviting public to comment on this? At some point, right?
Correct.
Okay, so can I just make a, in the resolution, maybe to fix this issue and, and go on, is maybe we don't want to limit this to attach to the staff report as attachment C, because it is digital and it can be moved around with a mouse and looked at and made bigger and smaller and zoomed in and out zoomed and all that. Maybe we need to have a more flowy statement about what this map is. It isn't really just attachment C. It's also represented by attachment B that has, you know, the yellow outline of the town in it. And as Linda Neal pointed out, we need to have reference to some outlining areas within our sphere of influence to address county matters as well. So I think part of the problem with this resolution is that it's defined as attachment C, which maybe isn't the best thing to do with a digital map, since it's, it's kind of fluxy. If you could move it around, you can see a lot of aspects to it. I'm assuming this works like Marin maps.
It, it is the same thing as Marin maps, yes.
Okay, so, so that's, with Marin maps, you can see the entire county, you can see one lot and, and everything in between. So I, I think part of the problem with this reso is, is it says attachment C and it's a little bit too rigid in that regard. Rigid, yeah, it is, it is, you know, and it isn't, maybe it's not correctly referenced as it should be, because attachment C is very limited. And I think that's being brought up by these guys and I kind of see the point. So maybe the best thing to do would be redefine that attachment or what is going to be approved here. And Commissioner Swift, yeah?
So I, I guess I'm still a little concerned about what we're capturing. I'm not clear that what is digitized is clear that what is digitized includes all these outside areas at this point in time. And I'm not sure that we need to address this tonight, in that if Commissioner Newton has questions and needs to get some clarification, that I guess I don't know that there's an issue with coming back with more answers or more clarity on this.
Okay, Linda, you can address that?
Well, no, I, I'm just, so as a staff person having to work with this old map, right? It is very, what Ben says is it's very difficult to determine where properties fall. It would be really helpful if we could find a way to go forward to get, you know, the one that shows just within the town boundaries referenced in the zoning ordinance, it's not changing, it's not different than the visual resources map. It's just like a, you know, portion of it, so that we have an easier time when we're processing HRD applications. We can actually figure out where they are on the map. It's, it's very difficult right now. So I, that's just, I, if you guys could find a way to do that, that would be great, but.
I guess if we have all those outlined areas already digitized, that's one thing. But I'm concerned when we talk about, on the commission, that we take a piece of something and that's like Phase One.
And then we never get.
And then we, you know, and it's Phase One and it accomplishes a goal. But we never go beyond that. And I think these maps are important. And that I'm concerned that we would do a Phase One and never get back to them and lose it.
Yeah.
Maybe one idea would be to continue this rather than approving it tonight. And let us take, maybe send us a link so we can all take a look at what the digitized map really behaves like. Because Cindy has a point there. And we need to kind of prove it to ourselves, I guess, that, that, that this, I mean, I'm all set, I was set to sign the reso. But I think the, the reference as attachment C is very limiting. Maybe we can, you know, refer to it as, as an HTTPS link or something, rather than just attachment C or B, because it is something that is digital. And we should be able to see that, I guess, would be that, would be, maybe that would be a comfort level. And why not go back to the Open Space Committee if they're going to have comments? Another question I have here is, you know, what benefit does it do us keeping an old map that is hard to use for property line purposes? It actually would increase our, or decrease our ability to make accurate determinations for project purposes. And therefore, we need a better map. That's, that's my comment.
Oh, I'm sorry. Do you think we could continue this item and ask that we initiate a joint meeting with the Open Space Committee, setting aside at our next meeting, one hour for them to give us a presentation that would include letting them know that we're considering a combination of digitizing this map and updating the code and referencing the 17.020, 030, 060, and asking them to give us a, a presentation about the history and use of these maps and any recommendations that they may have. You know, maybe that's 20 minutes or something, and then we spend 40 minutes discussing it and then continue that and give some direction to staff.
Okay, well, that's interesting. Mimi?
I, I love that idea. I think the other things I would ask staff to do is help us understand how we know from a digitized map, both what the, going back to this language, the ridge line, the major ridges and the the ridge line scenic corridors are based on the map that we eventually, you know, I don't know if, if what we really want to do is just name it, the visual resources map number nine. Kind of to me, even though it sounds like a semantics thing, undermines that map the way it is in the old open space element where it did mean something. And if we're going to change it to refer to a new map, why do we have to give it the name of the old map? Why can't we give it a new map, the 2020 visual resources? Something like that. Because I think it's important to maintain that historical integrity for the purposes of understanding how these things evolved, what people were talking about in, you know, the general plan from 74 and the general plan from 2010. I, I think there's, if you've got a digital map, my, my idea is it doesn't, it's not that difficult to zoom in on just the town. You know, if your map has got a bigger area, you can zoom out if you cut out area. And I think that the current corner of attachment C that says, you know, ridge lines, ridge line scenic corridors, you know, all those different codes of what the map is, you know, need to be discussed. So like the green areas with the red lines inside are the ridge line scenic corridors. And the ridge lines are all those areas outlined in green, the quote unquote major ridges. So those are some of the questions and I totally thank you, Michelle. I think that's a great idea to have a joint meeting with the Open Space Committee. I love that. Over.
Okay, any further questions for staff? Or discussion? Are we ready to bring it out to the public? Yes, okay. If anybody's out there with comments on this item, we will open the public comment period. Hearing none and seeing none, we will close the public comment.
There is one, Mark Bell.
Is there? Okay. Give him a chance to connect here. Mark, yes.
Okay, can you hear me?
We do.
Yes, we can.
Okay, so I agree with the comments from Mimi and I think that was Michelle. You guys are jumping all over the place on my screen about continuing this. I think that if you have people who can be clarify, clarify some of the resources, some of the language, some of the intent, because obviously I don't have to particularly watch what I say, but I don't want to see houses up on the ridges on the wall property. And so I want to make sure that that does not happen. And according to what virtually everybody in Fairfax understands is, it cannot happen. So we want to make sure that it does not happen. So if you need to continue this so that nothing ever gets built on the ridge line, then you should continue it so that we have everything clear. That's all I have to say.
Thank you, Mr. Bell. Any other public comments? Give a few seconds. Okay, if anybody sees, does anybody else see a public comment? No, okay, then we can, we can close the public comment period and bring it back to, let's see, we don't have a, we don't have a project person here. So bring it back to staff and us for discussion.
Well, what I'm hearing from your commissioner, at least two of the commissioners, and obviously we'll, we'll determine what the consensus is, is that we should broaden the scope of the discussion, that there are other things referenced in the visual resources map and specifically the major ridge lines that the Fairfax Open Space Committee should be brought into that discussion. If we can arrange a joint meeting with them and your next planning commission meeting is scheduled for July 16th. So we could certainly reach out to the open space committee and see what their availability is on that date. If not, perhaps put the request to them. And again, I, I'm not sure what their meeting situation is right now, but put their request to them for comments on what is being proposed and transmit that back to the planning commission if we can't have an actual joint meeting. And yeah, let's see what the rest of the commission says, I guess.
Okay, so any comments about Ben's comment? Okay, Commissioner Rodriguez? No, okay. No further comments? Is anybody ready to propose a motion? Such as and including a motion for a continuance or any, or motion for approval. I mean, my comment is, is the same as it was. I think after thinking this through a bit, since it is a digitized map, the reference to just attachment C is not good enough. And we need to have a better reference than just that because it's digitized. So just as our little squares move around on this screen, so a digitized map can be moved around. And I think also I would hope that staff would agree it would be better to have a more accurate map. I don't really have an issue so much with history. I, I think that the history has, has come and gone. Things changed, had an earthquake in 89. Some of these bridges may have moved slightly. I think a digitized map personally is, is, is the best idea. But unless we can come up with a better statement than as attachment C on there, I would, I would be willing to continue. And I don't mind hearing from the open space committee. Cindy?
No, I was just going to say I support reaching out to open space and, and not deciding this tonight.
So I'm just interested, anybody against that idea? Commissioner Caroline?
Yeah, no, I was just, I echo some of your comments, Phil, about yes, I think we should take advantage of technology to improve maps when they didn't have the technology to make them as accurate as we can today. So I think that would be a hopeful thing. I mean, I, I use the Marin map all the time and would be, you know, great to be able to have that available to the public for people to use. So any, any way that we can, you know, improve our past, past information to make it more user friendly and to improve it, make it more accurate, I think is a good thing. And I also think that we should try to reach out to open space to see if they have any comments.
Anyone else? Okay, anyone propose a motion? Not even a motion. Well, where do we go?
Oh, Mimi's there.
Oh, Mimi.
I'll move to postpone this item until our July meeting with the hopes that in the interim, we can reach out to the open space committee and include them in our next deliberations regarding this item. And that maybe staff will take a look at some of the issues we've raised tonight.
I'd like to amend that motion that the open space committee actually present to us some history of the, of this, the mapping. And any comments on the inclusion of the small map versus large map? Any code changes? But otherwise I would second that motion.
So amended.
Okay, and seconded, so I guess we need to take a roll call vote.
You need to unmute yourself.
Caroline?
Aye.
Rodriguez?
Aye.
Fragoso?
Aye.
Newton?
Aye.
Swift?
Aye.
Gonzalez Parver?
Aye.
Chair Green?
Nay.
Okay.
Okay, very good, thank you. And now we can move on to.
Can we take a break? Possibly, like a five minute break?
Let's keep it to five minutes because we don't want to go, you know, we have one more issue. But, you know, we got to turn off our video and mute and. Okay, back on to the discussion item. Number three, discussion of objective design and development standards, otherwise known as odds.
Yes, thank you, Chair. So this is another update about the status. Obviously, we had our May 27th odds workshop. And some brief background, the commission's been working on objective standards for the last several years. In 2018, the commission recommended the slope based density standards, which was subsequently adopted by the town council. The council also adopted after commission review and recommendation and updated digitized landslide hazard map. One of those classic 1974 documents. So the what you saw on the May 27th workshop was the presentation from Optico's. It was a comprehensive overview of their objective design and development standards work program. And a video of that meeting is posted. And we have the the digital information, the PowerPoint slides available. And so what we're looking at now is moving forward with this process. As noted in the staff report, there is an odds historic subcommittee reporting that we have not, as of this time, received proposals to do the work from any historic, architectural historian firms. But we are hoping, are hopeful that we will to perform reconnaissance surveys and develop, develop recommendations for protection of cultural resources. The idea is to incorporate those cultural resource and survey information that's gathered locally into the objective development standards work product. It's going to be a little bit trickier to knit those together because of the challenge in getting architectural historians on board. But it takes the time it takes. There's been many challenges in getting work products during the COVID crisis era. So in terms of discussion and recommendation, one of the items is how many Fairfax residents have taken the survey. My understanding, I don't have a count for Fairfax, but a total of 500 people countywide have taken that survey. And the hope is that we will get additional people participating in Fairfax to basically provide those type of preferences and information on that. And I am curious to see, because the information is, has been available to your commission as well as the several commissioners who did participate on May 27th, what your recommendations and comments are today. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. So any questions for staff from members of the commission? Yes, Mimi.
Well, Commissioner Swift has had her cardboard hand cut out for, for me.
You can go ahead, Mimi, I'll, I'll follow you.
Well, I guess I love your cardboard hand cut out. But the other thing is what outreach have we done? You know, when I took that survey and I only caught the tail end of that meeting and I knew I wasn't going to make most of it. But when I took that survey, I was just a little bit, you know, it's clear they're trying to get the nuances of different elements of all of the different things they were asking us to look at. But, you know, I, I didn't know if it really felt very Fairfaxian at all. And I wonder what outreach to Fairfax residents, you know, I saw some of the, you know, municipalities, I guess, had added additional questions for their particular jurisdictions. But what kind of outreach are we doing to get people from Fairfax to actually go in? And is that survey still up? Is that what we're trying to do? Over.
In terms of outreach within Fairfax, obviously every time it's been discussed, the survey's been mentioned, people have been encouraged to participate. It's been agendized before the town council. Participation in the survey was also encouraged. The objective design and development standards work is featured on the town's website with live links to the survey if people are interested. Beyond that, I'm not sure if it's been discussed in, in the town's newsletter. I believe it has. As your commission is aware, there was originally an intention or intentions to have a live roadshow at various locations around Marin, including in San and Samo. And unfortunately, this is one of the casualties of the COVID crisis that you couldn't have those type of live meetings. So to date, that, that amounts to the outreach as far as I'm aware. I'm not sure how much more we could do in that regard. In terms of special questions, that's additional budget. And what we've been focusing on is micro scale documentation, which is a little bit different. It's not a survey type thing. It's, it's really just looking at exemplars and areas to be used for purposes of assessing building types and development types within the town of Fairfax as well as other jurisdictions in Marin. We know, for example, that we share many common architectural styles and themes with towns such as San and Samo and Larkspur.
Okay, Commissioner Swift?
So is that survey still up or was that going to be taken down at a certain point? I thought I, I heard at the presentation that it was up for an extended period of time, but I didn't think it was going to be up permanently. So that would be one question because at that point in time, when we listened to that presentation, only seven people in Fairfax at that point had taken that survey. So that's concerning to me if the survey's still up. And I, and I agree that it's not a very good survey that represents Fairfax or would be easily kind of understood by Fairfax residents when you look at all the samples that were there. But there's also opportunities, we're doing weekly newsletters now. You know, we've got the council meetings where they could be mentioned. So is that up for a finite period? The survey? And then my other question would be, what's the timeline and the process going forward?
The survey is up for a finite period. It will be take, it's scheduled to be taken off at the end of June. That's what they reported in the May meeting. So there is a timeliness aspect to it, that it's been up for at least two months or certainly will be by the end of the, by the end of the survey period. And what was your other?
So what's the process moving forward timeline?
Right. There, the timelines as featured in the May 27th workshop are somewhat general in terms of specific deliverables and things like that. There will be some effort put into place and building types. And again, I would refer your commission and any interested listeners to the presentation, which is online under the planning commission's meeting archives for May 27th, where they get into some detail about what that involves. But that's the work that's, will be proceeding in the, this summer. There will be presentations before your planning commission as we get into the fall. More input gathering and with the intention that they will begin to unveil objective design and development standards in the fall to spring period.
Yeah, Commissioner Fragoso?
Thank you. I just wanted to comment that I, I was able to catch the slide deck on TV. I couldn't sign up for the Zoom for some reason. But I was very impressed with the work they've done, the approach they're taking. I very much like their place type, types atlas, their building types and where they began to flesh out objective design standards and architectural standards. It's exactly the very fine type of work that I have seen in, for example, in historic preservation documents that have been developed for cities I've worked in. I think it's a, it's a good way to move into what we have talked about as form based planning, which gives some very specific graphic images of the types of designs and characteristics that we're looking for. So I think they have a good start and I'm very excited to see what they come back with. And I will certainly hop online and take that survey before the end of the month, before they take it offline, so I can check that out.
Okay, thank you. I have okay, Commissioner Gonzalez Parver?
Okay, hi. I didn't attend the whole thing. I, I think I was able to see an hour of it, but I, so I went back today and was watching it and got so much more out of it a second time. I think Optico's is, what they're doing right now is very complicated. I think Optico is, what they're doing right now is very complicated. Just they're gathering a lot of information. It seemed to me, Ben, and correct me if I'm wrong, they're creating templates and for the various zones. And I guess the mixed use for like new construction and mixed-use buildings and creating a matrix so that local jurisdictions could basically go in and try to find what the objective standard is for, design standard for that specific application is, just to give the local jurisdictions more control. And as they develop this matrix and these templates, they will then get to the more specific, unique towns or topographies, like the sloped parcels, which may be very unique in themselves. And so it's almost, it's kind of a general process to a very specific, you know, developing standards to a very specific kind of parcel or project type. They, I think even when, as far as to say that, obviously, where high-risk hazard zones were involved, those would still require discretionary reviews and would probably not, you know, the templates would not apply to those types of projects. Because I think Michelle asked some really important questions, which I understood really only after I watched it the second time. So I think this is a process that is going to take a while for them to get to Fairfax, where we are, we have very specific needs, I think, because of our sloped topography. One thing that I took away from this, which was really important to understand, is that their standards right now, their design development standards, do not include single-family zones. So that means that ADUs are not included in their scope at this time, which for me was a disappointment, because that's like one thing I know we've been talking a lot about. You know, how do we control the development in a town like Fairfax, where, you know, risk and hazards are such a big issue? And I think, Ben, you kind of addressed that and said that is something that is being looked at by all the jurisdictions, but separately from what Optos is doing. Opticos, I mean, was that correct? Was that, was my understanding correct?
Yes, Fairfax, not every jurisdiction in Marin is participating in the ADU study, but Fairfax is one of the jurisdictions that is. So that is being studied separately by a different firm.
Yes, so I highly recommend that you watch the video, because there was so much information packed into that. I think it was an hour and a half that I really needed to see it twice to get the most out of it. And I think it's complicated stuff, but they're doing a great job in organizing the information to create these templates. So yeah, I think it's great.
Okay, other commissioners? Well, I have, I have some comments. So there's a.
Bill, if I could just break in, I think Commissioner Rodriguez has had her hand up for quite a while.
I'm sorry. Okay, go ahead, Commissioner Rodriguez.
It's okay. And I wanted to ask where that architectural firm RFP is posted. I think this is a critical aspect work for Fairfax, because we are so unique. Because I couldn't find it on the town's website. I kind of want to make sure that gets out well.
As a professional solicitation, we typically don't post those publicly. What we did was we did some outreach to determine which firms might be interested and have the qualifications, which is a different situation, and sent the RFP out to those firms.
And did the deadline pass then already, or when's the deadline for response?
We've extended the deadline to July 8.
One of the things I wanted the planning commission to know is that Optico said they were going to be developing some guidelines to address sloped property, and that they were doing some sectional work on that to see what they could bring. And they would be bringing that to their steering committee. They also mentioned that they had completed an existing conditions analysis and place types atlas for each of the jurisdictions. So I don't know, you know, what ours looks like, or how that might be used combined with the architectural details. We don't want to get too behind with the architectural firm, so that the slope study and this other thing can kind of all come together. But I did, I wanted to make one recommendation, and that was that the survey, like when people who go to our website, it would be good if we posted a link from our homepage again. I think it originally was on the town of Fairfax's homepage. And then I think it got pushed to the end. So the only way you can find it right now is if you type in Objective Design and Development Standards, and then you get to the page with the history of what's going on. And then you can follow the link to the survey. So maybe if you could recommend to the website folks that they repost that to the homepage, that would be really great. Thank you.
Yeah, I totally agree with that comment. I mean, I think we need a banner across the street that says, "Take the survey", just to put that in people's minds. We have to have more participation than seven, you know. I've always been a one for public participation. This is an extremely esoteric thing that we're doing here with the county. And it should be, I would think the PowerPoint also should be there. I might add my comment. So there's a project timeline in the PowerPoint. So for Cindy's question, there is a timeline that I don't really like much, because it goes to community meetings and workshops about two-thirds through the process. And I don't like that. I think that, I think the community should be joined in at a sooner level. And then another, another thing, so there are some examples. There's a slide in that that says, "What are Objective Design and Development Standards?" And examples include building height, and they get a definition, you know, sort of a mock-up definition, and parking, and they have a mock-up definition. But then one thing really bothered me about this slide presentation, just to be really honest with you. And that is the one that says, "Why should cities and towns in Marin and Marin County have Objective Design Standards?" And the answer isn't what my answer would be. Their answer is to ensure that participating cities and towns in Marin County are positioned as strongly as possible to achieve high-quality design for new multifamily and mixed-use buildings. And I guess that, I guess I'll ask you, isn't, is that because this does not apply to the ADUs and single-family zone sites? I mean, I think that in following, you know, that thought that high-quality design for new multifamily and mixed-use buildings is not going to apply that much to Fairfax. We have a few sites. Most of our, you know, most of our low-cost housing, for example, would be ADUs here. So I even question, you know, how we're participating, that's one thing. And then the other thing is, we've got to get the public out on this. And I think we should extend the survey beyond its current expiration date and advertise it a little bit.
Yeah, that's, it's a good comment, and maybe we should post some flyers. Or it's challenging to do, and obviously, this has a major impact on whatever future development does arrive. We're working on, well, the regional government are working on new RENA standards, Regional Housing Needs Assessment Standards. And we'll have our new housing numbers. And Commissioner Swift has requested that we provide information on what our current numbers are. And we should have those, that information shortly. But, you know, fundamentally, those are the units that you're supposed to figure out a way to get built. And we're several dozen behind what our current and prior regional housing needs assessment numbers were. So it's, it's something where it's hard to predict. Obviously, we don't control what developers do on private property, or I mean, those type of decisions. But we do know that the state is very anxious to see additional housing development to address the housing shortfall and for other reasons. And so these are the type of things that can and should, and hopefully will, provide high-quality development that is reflective of the community's needs. In terms of applicability to single-family and ADUs and things like that, Linda can comment on this, too. We have very little design, say, on, on single-family residential and ADUs. It's interesting that there's a movement afoot, a strong movement, to basically do away with single-family residential zoning and end up with what amounts to quadplex zoning on single-family lots. So we'll have to see how that shakes out and if and when design standards might be applicable to them. There's been, already been conversation about how to make sure we include small, low-density design standards for, in this project, and specifically for that potential eventuality.
Okay, I mean, it just seems to me, thank you for that, but it just seems to me what we're, you know, what we're kind of diving into here is something that might make Fairfax look like the San Fernando Valley in the near future. So, you know, this, this is, this is where my concern is. That we're not, this town is surrounded by open space. We're just talking about that. We have very narrow and limited exit paths in case of emergencies. And density is not something, you know, Fairfax hasn't grown by maybe one person in decades. I think the old signs are up there 7,500. Those are cast in stone practically, you know, residents of Fairfax. If we were to have 14,000 residents in Fairfax, how are we going to evacuate in terms of fire, et cetera? This is, this is the concern. And it has to be.
There are many natural limits to growth, and it's been observed for many years that Marin is essentially built out. I think some people get the wrong impression when they're not familiar with Mint, because they look around and they see a lot of open space. But of course, that's public open space and dedicated open space, and it's not available for development. So it will be very interesting to see. That being said, you can also look around the town and see that there still is some theoretical development potential. And certainly, our general plan identifies some of those locations. And these Objective Development Standards would apply to many of those.
Right, that's exactly what I meant, is that we have a few spots here where this might be applicable. And, you know, we just have to make sure that it doesn't get out of hand. You know, so for example, if, you know, San Rafael wanted to somehow expand its space, or Nevada, or something, that we wouldn't be stuck with some kind of standard, because that's what they're doing, right? We would, we would be able to have our own unique take on all this.
Yeah, and this is, this is part of the existing conditions analysis and the place types, is that they are breaking it down to a fairly specific level in identifying common themes within jurisdictions. And the idea is that what you see in downtown Nevada or San Rafael is definitely going to be different from what you would see or want to see in downtown Fairfax. So this is where it gets very interesting in terms of what's relevant and applicable and would be applied in the future to our local regulations in guiding and restricting development.
Right, exactly. So what is it, I'm just curious, what is it you want from the commission regarding this item tonight?
Well, I was curious about, certainly for the commissioners who participated, and those who have, obviously, you've all seen the presentation, if you had any specific questions about the terms or the direction. I have to confess, some, a lot of this stuff was somewhat arcane to me. Norma astutely pointed out that it bears a lot of commonalities with form-based codes, where you're looking at what buildings look at, and really focusing on the appearance and the character of those structures. But yeah, if there were additional commission comments about where this was headed, or what the applicability was for Fairfax, certainly the outreach aspects are well-taken. And, you know, it's very challenging. I mean, we're all still kind of locked down and until we can meet in public. And I think that made a big difference in the public awareness and participation. And maybe it just shows that there isn't that much public observation of what we do, at least not until you get to real-world projects.
Right, right. Okay, thank you. Any more commissioner comments at this time?
I have a brief comment.
Okay, go for it.
I have a brief comment, if I may. Well, first of all, I think that once we're able to get rolling with our historic survey of our historic properties and characteristics, those can be built into this work and, and help provide a more local place type and, and building type and characteristic that we could encourage. I think right now it's still fairly generic to, to all of Marin County. I think there's a lot of work that they've done. This is not, not that it's unheard of, but it is a detailed process that takes time in each region to, to pull together the specifics. And I think that I'm not concerned that the community meetings have not yet occurred, because they've been doing the work and analysis of developing types and developing that, those images that the community can then respond to when, when we're ready to go out for community input. And perhaps, I know Garrett is doing weekly emails now, updating the community on what's going on. It's predominantly with COVID. But that might be a good place to put a link to this slide deck and, and a link to the survey, reminding people to go in there and take it. And if possible, extending it until after the Fourth of July, giving another 10 days for people to be able to get online and do that. It might be helpful.
Yes, I agree. Anything we can do to make this simpler for the public and make them aware of it. I mean, it's very disturbing. Only seven people have responded. I'll take one myself.
Yeah, I think that number has come up somewhat. I don't know. For example, when they reported the seven, that was actually figures from mid-May. It wasn't current as of that meeting. And as I said, I've specifically said, because they ask people in the surveys, I'm sure you're aware of that, you know, where do you live? And so hopefully, we've got at least a few dozen. But I know this is a concern countywide, because again, it's. it's, it's hard for people to understand that concepts like local review of multifamily development is going to be severely curtailed. And in some cases, there will be no public review. I mean, not effectively, that these things can be applied for via building permit. And that applies in certain circumstances to virtually every jurisdiction in Marin. And that's where you're going to really see the shockwaves concurrently or alternately. If you don't get these in, when those projects do come in, when, if you don't get your odd standards in, then you won't have anything by which to evaluate projects. So it may be a building permit, but if you can point to black line objective standards and say, well, okay, not so fast, you know, it needs to do X, Y, and Z. And in fairness to developers, they're looking for that guidance too. They don't want to waste their time and money doing designs that are problematic. So it really, the, the reduction in certainty has benefits for many parties who might be participating in this process. But we don't want to leave this public awareness of what the outcome of the, these, this process will be to when we finally get a multifamily development and people go, what the heck's going on? And you say, well, you know, this is, this is how it applies and we've been looking at this for months.
Can I piggyback on
Yes.
That to, to the chair? One of the things I've realized over the years with Fairfax is that there is a, there is a certain mentality, for the lack of a better word, in this community that any, anything, anything new and different that comes into Fairfax, especially if it's a structure, should be put to the vote of the entire community so that nobody can tell us what to do. And it's our community that develops what it is. We tell people what we want them to build and what it should look like. But they, they don't seem to understand that the standards, these design and development standards can give us precisely what they asked for, but we have to, we have to do it objectively. We need to get these patterns and, and these standards that do apply to our historic character and to the goals and objectives that we find in our general plan. They need to understand that this is a way for our community to get what we want to see, the type of development we want. But my experience is that people are skittish about, oh, the government is telling us what to do, or if you want to add a room, you should either send it to Egger or to, you know, it should be a vote of the entire population for whatever, anything that needs to happen. But this really is, is the way to go, I think, for us. And as, as Ben says, to, to quickly get our criteria and, and our guidelines and our, our, what it is we want to see in our community. And this is the way to do it, given what's happening with legislation on the state and national level.
Yes, that's true. And that's why I think we need to involve the public because the sooner the better. And, and a little more obviously is because we don't want to be running up to the edge of the cliff, have a project, and then everybody's like cramming in the, in the room and saying, what's going on here? You know, that's why we need to advertise the survey more. That's why we need to get more public participation. And that's my main concern here is that we're not getting quite enough participation. So I would also urge the website committee to make it, you know, headline, you know, give it a headline and, and have more participation. Because without it, we're going to be going into this fairly blindly and then be subjected to a lot of objections with those people who don't understand why. And they need to understand why now. And that's what I'm hoping we can do. So my recommendation would be we take that back to the town council and say, let's advertise this more and see where we go with the public.
Well, we can, I, I can certainly make sure that at the next council meeting, there's a mention made of it. And I will do my best to get this reposted on the opening page of the town's website. I, I know that, that's, that's been an issue.
Lynda, yes?
Ben, if, so I was just counting up the number of people that routinely get our notices. And it comes to 211. If we, if you came up with an encouraging message that we could send out, we could get it out to 211 people, most of them are residents, saying with a link to the survey. Couldn't we do something like that?
Sure.
Yeah, so that might help. But that's pretty easy, you know? If you, if you compose it with the link, then it's pretty easy to send it to all those people.
What about the other 7,300 people?
Well, I don't have their, their emails. I only have the emails of people that have asked to receive the notices. I mean, agendas, you know?
Paper to get out broader, paper man.
Could try to reach the IJ and see if they would put some on the paper.
Of course, there are people like Frank Egger who can, you know, motivate a lot of people. I'm sure he's aware of this, right? He must be aware of this.
Yeah, we haven't heard much from some of the people that one might normally hear from. As was observed, I think a lot of time, people feel like the historical way that Fairfax does things, and it's been very successful in maintaining the town's character, is sort of their default expectation. And, and that's the concern is that the, the ground rules have changed radically. And you're seeing this in various jurisdictions where there is more development, where people are surprised and often not in pleasant ways. So I, I, as I said, the COVID situation, I think, was very unfortunate because I think getting those few dozen people who would have attended that to talk about it amongst their friends would have segwayed into the survey quite nicely. And absent that, I think that it's, it's just one of those things where we toil away out of the public eye much of the time. And we'll do our best to raise the, one of the nice things, I guess, is if we, if we have a deadline, we can simply say, you know, you've got to get your comments in. And as, as I said, I think their expectation is to close it on the 30th. And that's, that was an extended period as it stands. So I'm not sure if they're willing to push it further back. I mean, I'd like to do it and I will request that. But I think when we do the, when we do the notice and say, you know, we've been telling folks about this survey for two months and now it's come down to two weeks. And so you can either get your comments in or, you know, accept that the people who have commented are the ones who are pretty much going to have the input into that phase of this work.
Right, you get what you pay for. In a way, right, exactly. Well, any other, we're not making a motion about this, right? Or anything, we're just
No.
Listening, any other comments? Okay, it was Norma? No, okay, so seeing no other comments. Do you have anything that, Ben, that you can take back to the town council for this discussion?
Well, aside from the, the fact of getting people to participate in the survey, I'm not sure, you know, as you're aware, the council's been doing two-a-month meetings. They're kind of burning the candle at both ends on their various issues. So aside, you know, we could definitely post it on the webpage or hopefully can post it on the first page of the webpage. But we'll, we'll see what else we can do. I, I'm not sure if we can get full council involvement at this time.
Okay, well, I think what we should do, I mean, what I'm hearing, what we should do is start working on looking at what we might suggest as objective design and development standards for Fairfax. And they give some examples, as I said, in the slide, building height, parking, building mass, maybe really worth, I totally agree with Esther, it'd be really worth going, looking at this again and going through the presentation again. And then taking notes and thinking about each of us, what kinds of objective design and development standards, you know, we can think of for those, you know, those kinds of projects. Is that a good suggestion?
Yes.
Bring Laura on it?
Yes, and one other thing is, and I mentioned this to the commission, I think at the last meeting, was thus far, we've had limited interest in serving on the historic subcommittee. I mean, certainly the two commissioners who will be participating in that are great. And Cassie De Baker is, is a resource unto herself. But if, if you can kind of, you commissioners can beat the brush a little bit and try to get a few more people who have that historic vein or interest, interested in participating in that, give me their names and I will reach out to them because, you know, that's another example of, I'm not going to say we're going to be operating in the dark on this, but it's certainly a situation where when you have historic committees and things like that, you'd like to get a lot of people involved. And I think that will help feed into a very Fairfax work product, our historic resources analysis. So to the extent that you can think of some other names that maybe weren't in the first round of potential volunteers, that would be appreciated.
Okay, I want to show everybody, you know, this, this, it's not coming, I don't know if you can see this. This is the book, you can buy this in Fairfax and many, many places. This work called Images of America: Fairfax is a terrific book. It's really a pretty good history of Fairfax. And it kind of explains why we have a history that needs to be preserved. Lots of things happened here that you may not even realize. I recommend to all commissioners to get that book by William and Brian Sager, who both apparently were approached and rejected participating in this historical attempt. So, yes. It's a great read too, by the way, it's really interesting. Okay. Any other comments on this, on this point before the minutes are next? Right, okay, all right. Well, we can, we can close this discussion item. Do we need to open it for public comment on this item?
Yes, I think if there's anybody that wishes to comment.
Okay, so if there's anybody participating who would like to discuss the objective design and development standards? No, hearing none, then we'll close the public discussion on this item. And we've already discussed it quite a bit, so I'm thinking of moving on now to the minutes from April 16th and May 21st. Myself, I didn't have any comments on the minutes. I want to, do want to say one thing, I, I think the minutes are generally superb and a really good record of what we're doing here so that if anybody ever has to look back at what we've done, I think we have terrific minutes. So thank you for preparing those.
Yeah, Tony does a really good job. We're, we're lucky to have her.
Commissioner Swift?
Yeah, I just, I was fine with the May minutes. I just had one typo on a name misspelled on the April minutes and I sent that to Lynda. That was Liesel Blatch.
Okay, so Lynda has that. Do I hear a motion to approve? Yes, Mimi or whoever goes first, Mimi or Commissioner Caroline?
I think Michelle's had her hand up again. You might want to ask for a raise of hands and see who's raising up their hand because every time you look down, people raise their hands and then you look up and people put their hands down. But I do want to go after Michelle and Laura.
Okay, so Michelle?
The only change that I'm recognizing is on the May 21st minutes. It's showing Gonzalez Parver as absent, but then showing her voting later. She just came a little late, so she needs to be shown as there. And I don't know how minutes are typically done here, whether it needs to show her coming at a certain time or whatever. That's the only change that I have.
Okay, yeah, something like the minutes should reflect that Commissioner Gonzalez Parver came in at some point, whenever that was. I think that's a good idea. Any other comments? Commissioner Caroline?
Yes, on, on May 21st, on page six, we were discussing the, the house on 88 Toyon Road. And I don't know, about a third of the way down on the page, my comment was asked if they would be willing to go with a softer color. I wanted to put in, I was talking about the white color. So if you could add, Commissioner Caroline asked about the white color and if they would be willing to go with a softer color, I think would be more what I wanted to say. And then at some point, I'm not sure exactly where, so on the residence on Cascade Drive, I think when I was asked a question of the applicant, Mr. Rushton, about the garage elevation, I think at one point, I, I made a comment that was better to have the vehicles in the garage than in the yard. And I didn't see that reflected in. And so I thought perhaps that was a good spot, place to put it would be on page nine under my comments. And on page 11, I know that Lynda read an email from Lynda Novy. And I just, I don't, I'm not sure if what was stated reflected all of her comments because I think they, they talked about cars parked on the site during construction, but I think she was concerned about cars that were parked on the site in general. So those were, those are my comments.
Okay, thank you. Anything else? Commissioner Newton?
So for the April 16th minutes on page three, that particular commenter, Patrice, is with a P-A-T-R-E-C. And then we already got the correction of Liesel Blatch. On page seven, under item three, discussion about the ODDS, there's a paragraph that starts, Commissioner Rodriguez asked if there would be a staff level in mission discussion. And towards the end of that paragraph, it says, this is one of the benefits of have a subcommittee. And I think we should change that to having a subcommittee. And then on page eight, the second group of comments, which is from Commissioner Swift, the second bullet says, one of the outcomes she was looking for would be to identify and understanding the state. And I would just say, understand the state. The next set of bullets, it says Chair Green provided the following comments. And Chair Green, maybe you can tell me if that first bullet makes sense to you. There were overlays to this private, to this, private organizations There were overlays to this private, to this, private organizations, certified buildings and government identities of buildings that can force standards on buildings. That seemed a little convoluted. I didn't know.
What page is that on?
It's on page eight. Chair Green provided the following comments, for the April minutes.
Yeah, I don't know if I said that. And I don't recall what it was I was trying to get to, except that we're talking about historical buildings. Okay, so I think what this really is, is I'm just saying that there are overlays, there are different aspects to identity of historical buildings. One is to certify buildings and another is to force standards on buildings. And I thought I said also that merely identifying historical buildings doesn't do either of those things, but I was just trying to explain there are different aspects to identifying historical buildings that don't always mean somebody, a landowner has to, you know, provide some certain kinds of standards for them. So that's what I meant.
Well, maybe we could just change the word identities to identification. There were overlays to this, private organizations that certify buildings.
Thank you for.
Government identification of buildings that can force standards on buildings. Okay. And then moving on to the May minutes. No, I don't have anything on the main minutes.
Yes, Commissioner Parver, Gonzalez Parver?
Yes, just a couple of corrections on page three of the May 21st minutes. Attached for B. Let's see, the, the third paragraph from the bottom says Commissioner Gonzalez Parver provided the following comments. Second bullet should say multiple construction products running concurrently in these areas of narrow roads can pose a problem. So I think it just wasn't very specific as to what the problem was. It's just if you have too many projects running concurrently in the wooie, that could be very dangerous. The other comment is on page six of May 21st. And going past the bullets at the top, one, two, three, four. Fourth paragraph, it says Commissioner Gonzalez Parver referred to sheet A 1.3 and asked about the wall mounted lights. The legend does not correspond to the specification. She asked if it was adjustable or if it points up. Mr. Holder stated that it is a universal fixture and would be a downlight. The last sentence should say it could be removed from the plans and a new light will be approved by staff. That's it.
Okay, any other comments on either minutes? So I wonder if we can combine a motion to approve both minutes? Someone wishes to offer such? Is that Commissioner?
I, I move that we approve both the minutes of our last two planning commission meetings as amended this evening by commissioners.
Do I hear a second?
Second. Okay. Call Newton?
Hi.
Ragoso?
Hi.
Gonzalez Parver?
Hi.
Caroline?
Hi.
Swift?
Hi.
Rodriguez?
Hi.
Chair Green?
I was not here at the first meeting, but 16th minutes.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. Now here's report section.
Yes, Planning Director's report. Briefly, Town Hall will be partially reopening on Monday. The reason it's a partial reopening is obviously we're still dealing with many of the same constraints that we had during the full shelter in place order. One of the things that is happening is because we've been assisting applicants and property owners throughout this period. We've also been reviewing a lot of things electronically. Our email traffic has gone up substantially. So, excuse me. But we will be open in our normal Monday, or excuse me, our normal morning hours, Monday through Friday, and we will, staff is available for appointments in the afternoon. And this will enable people to not have the full crew in Town Hall at the same time. But that's good news is that, you know, we're sort of inching towards normalcy, whatever that actually turns out to be in the future. And we've been holding off on fire safety discussions for now, but staff anticipates having those conversations with fire and the people in charge of the fire studies and specifically the evacuation study. Because as was noted earlier tonight, that's a huge issue in Marin and kind of accompanies any discussion about development, really. And specifically as it relates to accessory dwelling units. So we will be coming back on that. And that's it.
Okay, thank you. Any Commissioner comments or requests?
I think he was also maybe going to report on, there was an item that we decided on that was appealed to town council and what was the outcome of that. And then it was also, we didn't know about the urgency ordinance for commercial going to council. So maybe you could tell us if there's other things that have been approved under the temporary approval? And I think that's about it.
Well, in terms of the, yes, that's true, there hasn't been a report. The town council did take action on and adopted an urgency outdoor use ordinance, which deals with commercial businesses using outdoor spaces, both private and public. There is interest in businesses in doing so. There appears to be a move afoot or to utilize the mono parking lot for businesses, for at least part of the time. And I'm not in the front lines on that discussion. The town manager is sort of taking the lead. But I will be continuing to review temporary use permits for individuals proposing to utilize outdoor spaces on their own property. And then your next question was about the appeal. Linda, we haven't heard that. Has that appeal been heard by the council yet?
No, it's set to go, you know, we are noticing that tomorrow for the July 1st council meeting.
Is that the appeal about the single family, three-story home that was denied?
Oh, are you talking about AD Crest?
Yeah. You're talking about.
Well, so there's two appeals. The temporary use permit for the lodge has been appealed. Okay, by one of the neighbors. And then AD Crest was supposed to go, but because of the coronavirus, we've extended that again, because the, the owners are elderly and they really don't, don't they feel that they would be better served if they could actually come to an in-person hearing. So.
Okay. All right, so I have a question whether, is, is there some city council decision process going on about commercial sidewalk space?
Well, you mean in the context of use of outdoor spaces by businesses?
I guess so. Actually, this is something Michelle sent me that she wanted to make sure was a agenda item. I didn't get on this week's, this month's agenda.
We, we know that there are many places in town where the sidewalk space is quite constrained. And obviously ADA minimum width requirements need to be adhered to. Beyond that, I would respond to a question, I guess, if there was additional clarification requested.
Sorry, I don't remember. I don't remember what that was.
Okay. Well, I think my comment about that, you know, that's a comment issue. We need to enable restaurants especially to utilize outdoor spaces wherever possible. And I, I think that you know, we heard from the, the lodge tonight, and they're not the only ones in this situation. Pickup and delivery and that type of thing is not going to keep these businesses healthy. And we have a couple of bars closing?
Yeah, it's hard to speculate on, you know, things that you just sort of hear about anecdotally, but I did do some research and even the National Restaurant Association says that they fully expect 10 to 20% of all restaurants will not survive the COVID crisis.
Well, my comment there is it's a darn shame, because we have a wonderful set of restaurants and pubs here. So we should try to do whatever we can to muster them. Okay, any more Commissioner comments or requests? Yes, Swift?
Okay, I didn't get to these last time, so I'm going to try and rush through them. Are we issuing tree permits at all?
Yes and no, the, the tree committee has not been able to meet. And so with limited applicability, staff has been reviewing some tree permit applications.
So I guess the tree committee could meet if they chose to do a Zoom, but when we say, because one of the concerns obviously is, is we're in fire. So when we say we're approving some tree permits, what does that kind of category mean?
The specific ones we've been looking at are exactly what you referred to, the ones where there are fire safety concerns involved. For example, if the fire department is either directing it or has been involved with it. And we are very conscious that we are already in fire season and coming off of a significantly below normal rainfall winter. So things are drying out.
Okay, so, and the other part of that tree permit question that I had, we looked at 88 Toyon came before us. That was an application that had five species of trees and over 20 trees. When I looked at the posting that the applicant has to put up in their property, that posting said that they had, it named three species of trees. Didn't put an amount of the trees or anything other than three species of trees and go check down at Town Hall for more information on that. And I would request that there isn't anything specific in the tree ordinance about what needs to be in that information that's posted by the applicant, but I would request that when we give that to them, that we tell them that they have to identify, you know, the species of trees and the numbers of trees to give the public in that area a better idea of what's being proposed, especially on Toyon. You know, they had that whole property behind fencing, so nobody could see what was there. So that's just a suggestion on that. Short-term rentals, you said at one of our prior meetings that we weren't going to be taking that up. And that was something that the council had asked for, but it was late that evening and you didn't have a chance to get into that more specifically. So could you address whether we are or aren't? And then why?
Well, I can say that the town manager was going to take the lead on that and in the midst of two a months with the town council. That has kind of moved back on the priority list. I could ask him if he has any ETA of when that might be taken up, but I, I can basically without speaking for him, say that they've got higher priorities to address right now.
Okay, so it's not that it's not going to be looked at this year? Theoretically.
Theoretically, but that was, that was a pre-COVID item.
Right, understand.
A lot of things have been just put off indefinitely. And as I said, if the council's doing, continues to do their two a month meetings, stuff like that, I don't think it would be fair to ask the town manager to take additional time to get into a discussion of that.
You also said, and it seems that you've changed on that tonight, that the subcommittee on the fire safety and the ADUs was off the table, but it seems like that back on the table now?
Well, it's not so much that it was off the table. I think what we need to do is get clarification on when some of the moving pieces that are necessarily involved with a serious analysis of fire safety as it relates to accessory dwelling units. When those pieces will be brought to the forefront and specifically in evacuation study. As your commission is acutely aware, the state is pretty much looking at objective standards and objective information, or they don't want to hear about it. I don't know to what extent ADU challenges have circulated through the court system. But I would dare say that before jurisdictions propose significantly limiting where and how those ADUs can be located, that they should have some pretty solid objective analysis to support their decisions.
So then you will be setting up a meeting with the chief, correct?
Correct, and other individuals involved with, who might be involved with that, that discussion.
Okay, and then you, since I'm on the subcommittee, you'll let me know when that is?
Yes.
Okay. And then my last one is, you mentioned the Rena numbers that we had asked for in April. The other piece of that is in looking at the housing element. And I know it's not finalized, but we also have our annual housing report we send to HCD. And in looking at the housing element, it says that that's supposed to come to the planning commission on an annual basis at the April meeting for review. So, and we haven't done that, probably since the housing element was
adopted.
Adopted. So trying to put that on the calendar for next year. But when we get that back, can you also send that out to commissioners? And as soon as you have the Rena numbers, that would be great. Thanks.
Yeah, and just as a heads up, we will be getting the new Rena numbers sometime this summer. And preliminary indications are they will be quite large.
And, and what I'm looking for is our Rena numbers and what we've done. So here's, you know, here, here are the requirements and here's how we've met them, or not in the categories.
We're working on that.
We should already have that now. Yeah.
Yeah, the, the information that we're still gathering is we have what we put in our various housing element. But what we need to do is bring it up to the current issuance of building permits and, and relate that to our Rena numbers. So we'll, we'll compile that and, and send it out to your commission.
And that, I assume then, by what you're saying, is not part of the annual housing report we submit to HCD?
One of the challenges is that we send that to them and then they compile it in some ways and give it back to us. And with the COVID crisis, they haven't, there was a delay in getting the information to them or an extended deadline, and they have not provided that information back to us.
Right. But I guess what I'm asking is, when we submit that house, annual housing report, we respond to how we've met those numbers or no?
We do, and it's an electronic form that the state provides, and we don't get a copy of that initially. So it's one of those situations where you work away at it, and Linda's done that. But it's, it's not as simple as just getting a copy of the report and providing it to the commission.
Okay, because I guess if we had provided them the numbers, we'd have them. But I look forward to seeing those. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Newton?
So there was a really interesting budget meeting last night with the town council. Usually only like two or three people show up to those meetings, and this one was well attended because of the, you know, intersection of all this stuff that's happening in our lives right now, Black Lives Matter and defund the police is a, is a big movement now. And so there was a whole discussion last night. And I, and so I've been kind of thinking about these things from bird's eye view perspective. And I really feel like one of the issues that so many people have with how government works is that as communities, we put off onto our police force the, you know, implications of mental illness and drug addiction and, you know, housing issues. And because we have a role with respect to one of those issues specifically, which is the housing crisis, I want us to all think about maybe and maybe talk about next month, ways in which we can reach out to the police department potentially to see if there are implications for lack of affordable housing that implicate the work day view and, you know, figure, think, just, you know, brainstorm on other ways in which the town of Fairfax can help reduce that particular element of this larger crisis that all of our communities are facing. And, you know, Fairfax isn't immune. Thanks.
Thank you. Any other Commissioner comments? You all are yawning, I'm noticing. And so I would like to propose that we adjourn. Anybody care to make a motion?
I move that we adjourn.
Second?
I second.
Thank you. And so do we need to do a roll call vote?
We do.
Let us.
Newton?
Hi.
Fragoso?
Hi.
Gonzalez Parver? Okay, Rodriguez?
Hi.
Swift?
Hi.
Caroline?
Hi.
Chair Green?
Hi, and thank you all for participating.
Thank you.
Good night, everybody.
Thank you.
Bye.
Thank you, Tamela.
Yes.
Thank you, everyone. This does conclude our June 18th meeting of the Fairfax Planning Town Commission. Goodbye.